Welcome to the April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four work session of the Mayor and Council for the City of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. And first up, we have Parking Deck Stadium Update. Scott Nice-Werner, our City Administrator. Is he David, is he coming?
Good this year.
But we do have Linda.
Eversaw.
Eversaw, come to the, please, thank you. I was about to say, come to the mic.
Mayor, thank you for, uh, for getting this on the agenda for us. I just thought it'd be nice being that, that we were coming up to less than a week now, five days until, soft opening of Meredith's Park that we have. Linda and David, of course, David probably has, you know, probably not doing really anything productive at the moment anyway. At least give you an update on how the stadium is going and we can also give an update on, on the, uh, we'll hear an update on the parking deck during the parking rates this session. So, thank you, Linda.
Sure. Happy to be here. Your Hagerstown boxcars are now two and two. So, we played one series up in North Pennsylvania. We play at Lancaster tonight. But more importantly, our ballpark is coming together here. We were on calls with the Maryland Stadium Authority last week and they kept saying decommissioning this one, decommissioning that one. So, they were clearing out, they're hanging signage, finishing that up. I know that TMG Studios is in there doing a lot of the interior signage. We've been blessed to use a lot of the local, local representatives here to do some of the work. So, that's been a blessing. We are having a soft opening starting on the fourth. And that's because we will not get the keys to the facility until the second. And that gives us enough time then to go get the liquor license, bring our product in, need to get the food and beverage in there. And just make sure all of our employees are, are ready to go. We have hired our game day staff. They have been in the Harold Mail Building doing training on the POS systems. That's a pretty picture. We have been very blessed by the City of Hagerstown. We've had con- conversations with Scott Nice-Werner constantly. Brittany Ayers-Mundy has been there all the time. The Hagerstown City Police have been in to see us numerous times and talk specifically about how they want game day to be very safe, how they will have drones deployed. They've installed additional cameras around the ballpark. They've put the blue lights up where you can go if you have an instant emergency that you need them right away. So, we feel very safe. We feel confident that the public is going to feel safe as soon as they start seeing all of this. And once we get a few feet on the street, I have no doubt we'll have a whole bunch of feet on the street.
Nice. I, what was it like when you guys went to the first game up in, was it, uh, you was in New York, PA? What was that like in that community and just the feel of it?
Their ballpark's very cool also. I mean, not as cool, but, um, you know, it was, they were very welcoming. They invited us to use, you know, some, one of their suites and, and were very welcoming. And of course, we'll reciprocate when they come back down here. But it was a very community feel to it.
Nice.
Their children's area is a little different. They've got a carousel out in their outfield and that sort of thing. But we'll have a children's area also, so it should be comparable in that respect.
And New York was the place we went to back, oh my goodness, ten years ago. That is very much like what we have here. It has a trail that goes from downtown called Brooks Robinson Way that goes into the stadium. They are in the middle of a residential area. Behind the outfield fence is a residential area. Behind the left field fence, they have, I think, an apartment building or an apartment complex. And then I think there's a railroad that goes by it also. So, very, very similar to what, uh, to what Meredith's Park is going to be.
Where'd you guys park? No kidding.
We're, actually, we went up on a bus. So, we got dropped off. So, I really don't know what their parking situation is like. But we feel pretty good about our parking situation, even without the new deck. We feel that there is plenty of surface parking. People may have to walk a little bit, but to me, that's a benefit to businesses downtown because there's so many really cool things downtown.
Okay.
So, we think that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Yep. Any questions?
You guys have any questions?
Thank you very much. Are you excited?
So excited.
Really, are you nervous?
That's David's job to be nervous.
I just want to make sure you aren't. Okay.
No, no, I'm.
And you would never know if David was nervous in the first place.
He's very, very lucky, yeah.
Yeah.
Sweet.
Linda, I also want to say thank you to you, you know, to your entire family, the Bowman family, for all that you've done in Hagerstown downtown specifically. So, I think, I think everyone's hoping and expecting that this project be a catalyst for a lot of additional economic development, um, you know, in, in the near future. So, i- it is very exciting and let's play ball.
Yes. Very excited, thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next up, we have Physical Year Twenty-Five Budget Review. Michelle Hipper, our Chief Financial Officer. Brooke Garver, our Accounting and Budgeting Manager.
Good afternoon. So, this evening, I know we're a little bit behind schedule, so we're going to attempt to keep us on track. But please feel free to ask questions. I want to take a minute before we actually turn into the budget book, or if you wish to turn into your budget book, you can, just to talk about rates. So, we have been talking the past several weeks individually about parking and water and wastewater. And those rates are items that must be individually approved and voted by the administration. There are many other rates and fees that the city does across multiple funds that are listed in the budget book and that are changed, if you will, by an admin order or by simply the adoption of the budget. So, I wanted to take just a minute because I do want to mention what those are, okay? One, we've already talked about briefly during the April ninth work session. And Jim Bender mentioned as we moved forward with our new trash contract, but the increase to trash and recycling rates, and that was from fifty-three dollars to seventy-seven, uh, I'm sorry, for fifty-five to seventy-three dollars a quarter. Other proposed rates in here, um, one is a forest conservation payment in lieu. And that is driven mostly by inflation. And again, this is in Section Eight. So, if you want to, you can turn to those sections and see, but you don't have to. Other, other rates that are changing are various code administration charges, but they all center around a tech fee. So, they have different fee structures broken out. There's a tech fee component to many of those. The tech fee is the portion that's changing. Public Works has, um, an arrangement with the State Highway Administration and a contract for inspection fees. We're looking to change that from fifteen-hundred to two thousand. And then in both water and wastewater, benefit charges and rental fees. So, there's some cell tower rents that go up automatically and some rental of residential properties. But again, all of those are broken out in detail in Section Eight. And we can always revisit them, um, next week if that's what this body would wish to do. Otherwise, um, I think what we're going to do is go ahead and start looking at the capital improvement section. And that is Section Seven. And the capital improvement program section is an area that isn't just one fund or one type of fund. This is an area where we have all of our infrastructure and capital items across all of our funds. So, if you would, in Section Seven, uh, the very first page is a nice program overview. We've got a little chart. So, in Section Seven, on Page One, you can see in Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Proposed Budget. In total, we're looking at a capital infrastructure amount of just approximately fifty-nine point three million. And you can see the breakdown of that. The general fund component is twenty-seven point four of that total fifty-nine point three. Also have information in that chart that lists the current Fiscal Year Twenty-Four budget as well as the estimated actual where we think we're going to spend. I'm going to have you flip the page. Page two and three. And the reason I want to take a moment to talk about Pages Two and Three is in the overview section of our budget book, we have a place for strategic plan. We have goals and vision. But also in our capital improvement projects, we do this overall program summary. And one of the main components of it is talking about the strategic plan and all of the different categories that has been, um, identified by this administration. So, one was neighborhoods, revitalization and sustainability, public safety, public facilities and infrastructure, economic development, citizen-based government, fiscal accountability, parks and recreation for active, healthy living, innovative and progressive government, community promotion and pride, economic development through sports and tourism. We were very specific on that the day. Miscellaneous projects, goals and legislative priorities. So, again, this is laid out in a couple of different places, but it's nice here in the capital improvement section. We put it here. We also include short excerpts on what that means, but also how we have tied that in through the priorities and the projects throughout the budget. We have, if you were to do the math, like on the first page I showed you, fifty-nine point three million. So, this is one of the only places in our budget book where staff has come back and tried to look at every single project and fit it into these items and these categories that have been predefined and give you the dollar amount of what we have included in the budget specifically to the priority. So, for instance, let's just pick on public facilities and infrastructure. You'll see literally within the first sentence, we're saying, "The budget proposal provides thirty-six point eight million." And you'll see that throughout. But again, even when we do not specifically have an item in these categories that has a defined capital project, it could still have a significant impact in our budget within the operations. This is just one of the few areas where it's a very nice, comprehensive section of all the city projects. So, a good place to include that. Wanted to make sure we brought that to your attention again because this is the plan and the categories is outlined by this, this body.
Brooke, I'm going to turn it over to you for some. So, then we'll move to Page Sixteen of the same section. Tonight, we're just going to focus on general fund capital improvement projects. This chart lays out all the projects by funding source. So, you can see how that twenty, twenty-seven point four million is funded. So, I'll just hit some of the larger, um, funding sources. The first one is ARPA, one point nine million budgeted in FY twenty-five.
And if I could, the nice thing about all these reports and these, um, in the beginning, we repeat them for every fund. But as Brooke mentioned, one point nine million, we've also right next to them have a project forty-five dash C number. That's the detailed sheet you're going to, we're going to show you some later. But those are the detail sheets where you can see those informations. So, it's a nice reference guide to point that out to. I'm sorry, Brooke.
Uh, the third one down, general fund fund balance, two point two million, which we talked about last week a little bit. CIP fund balance, six point five million. These are generally projects that have rolled over from a previous period or have been pushed forward from a previous period. Then we'll get down to grants at the bottom of Page Seventeen. There's ARC, county, federal, state. All of these grants that move into Page Eighteen total approximately five point four million dollars in FY twenty-five.
And again, that's just in the, on the general fund side for capital projects.
Moving over to Page Nineteen are transfers. The largest is from the general fund, of course, which totals two point eight million on Page Twenty.
Oftentimes, people will ref- will reference or utilize the phrase pay-go funds. It just literally means current year operating monies that were moving from the general fund over to the CIP fund to pay towards infrastructure. So, the two point eight million is literally a cost in the general fund, right? It's one of those things in the charts we look at.
So, then you'll see the twenty-seven point four million at the bottom. And then just for reference, I'm not going to go over it now, but, um, Page Twenty-four then lists those exact same, um, projects but by department.
Some area, some, some are very in tuned and want to see by funding source. Some just want to see it by department. We do it both ways. We also do another report in here that shows them both. It's a little more cumbersome. These reports are two of my favorite in this section because it's a very good reference.
Michelle and I picked out four CIPs to go over tonight. These are all, again, general fund, some of our higher dollar, um, projects. So, the first is on Page Fifty-nine. This is an HPD Capital Improvement Project, Public Safety Technology. There are two projects, um, scheduled for FY twenty-five. The first is.
And again, that's Page Fifty-nine.
It's okay, you're good. I did say that. Purchase of Axon stationary license plate reader units for fifteen thousand dollars. So, capture and catalog vehicle registration information and allows HPD to use the Axon LPR system to add more compliance to body cam or custodial video regulations. The second is the expansion of the camera system throughout the city. It includes fairground, the fairgrounds, city park, Maryland Avenue, alleyways and other points throughout downtown. It's two hundred thousand dollars. And down at the bottom, you can see how these are funded by CIP, general fund fund balance. So, a hundred thousand from that two point two million we talked about earlier and then, uh, general fund, a hundred and fifteen thousand.
And we don't have, we have very few that, um, would have any current bond, bond issues. But in years that we do, under the budget impact slash other, we typically come back and we will add a statement in there so that we provide an estimate of what that cost is going to be for annual debt services. How many years the bond we're going to take and interest rates. One of the reasons we wanted to stop here is because you're going to say, well, Michelle, Brooke, two hundred and fifteen thousand by far is definitely not one of the largest projects in here. No, but it is one of our newer ones and we worked with and collaborated with, um, HPD staff because this is, the expansion of the camera program is one thing, but they didn't come with just that concept. It was an entire concept. It was growing the watch center. It was, um, increasing the drones. And it, it's a multitude of things that is going to kind of morph, um, the way that public safety, specifically HPD, is able to do certain functions. And what they were kind enough to participate with us is prioritizing and laying those out. One, not just because of funding source, but two, because of staff resources. How can you do it all in one year?
Okay. The next one is on Page Eighty-one. The steam engine museum through the Parks Department. There is seven hundred ninety-three thousand dollars budgeted in FY twenty-five. And that includes the renovation of a locomotive and a, the building of a new cover pavilion. These are funded through general fund fund balance, CIP fund balance, and then a six hundred and thirty-three, wait, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar, um, TAP grant, Transportation Alternatives Program.
Which is a federal grant. We've already been awarded that grant. And one of the things, um, that we're mentioning here is, you know, this isn't necessarily new to most everybody sitting here, but because there's been prior conversations. The reality was, we received the TAP grant, it was great. We put out a bid and we got received absolutely no responses. So, we're, I say we, I mean, I mean, all the wonderful departments that are behind me. Um, in this instance, that would be Jim Bender and his engineering staff are in the process, timing-wise, trying to redraft another, another bid and get this back out in hopes that we can get movement and get this project completed in Fiscal Year Twenty-five.
All right. Next is city park improvements on Page Eighty-four. There's six hundred and forty thousand dollars budgeted in FY twenty-five. And this includes, uh, the improvement of the upper parking lot or the burnout lot. And resurfacing the tennis courts to place pickleball lines and upgrades to the Christmas display. The parking lot is six hundred thousand. The tennis courts are twenty thousand and the Christmas display is twenty thousand.
So, you can see in the details that we provided, we identify a project if there's multiple items happening within it. We try to outline that, give you information, give you dollars. With this one, um, this, I, I think it's November, December. But one of the requests that we have that's pending was we applied for Program Infant Space or POS grant funding. And some of that money was to be utilized towards the burnout lot. Do that every time.
Okay. And last is a fire capital improvement project on Page One-O-five.
And this was one, I think, that Councilmember Brini mentioned in one of our other meetings. He was hoping we would come back and discuss.
This is public safety radios and in-station alerting. Seven hundred and fifty thousand budgeted in FY twenty-five to upgrade both the county radio infrastructure, computer-aided dispatch systems and station alerting at six facilities at a hundred and twenty-five thousand per facility.
And this is being funded through Fund Balance Reserve, which is one of those items. And I think at the point that we were asked to make sure we stopped on this page. As well as CIP fund balance, we had monies previously assigned in this project that we, when we, um, thought we were going to have to pay towards radios and then we didn't have to actually purchase those. So, we're going to repurpose that money and then new transfers from the general fund or pay-go. If there's not any specific questions or if there was no one project, there is many wonderful projects through here. And by absolutely, the Hagerstown Fieldhouse is in here and we could talk about it. But because we already talk about it and we've seen it and it's making wonderful progress. If you haven't driven by there recently, every day they are making wonderful progress. Um, we just thought we would mention a few others, right? Highlight a couple of things that we've talked about here. So, if not, we're going to go to Section Four, which is our special revenue section.
Do you have any questions? Kristen?
Kristen.
I'm sorry, I slipped fast.
I think I have one question.
Sure.
And I don't know that it's so specific to the CIP's discussion. But for the, the expansion of the police camera system, and I think we got this, we got this question from one of the neighborhood groups the other week, you know, uh, in regard to, uh, police services. And I, as I said at that meeting, you know, it's, it's interesting how quick the average person is to want government to utilize technology to make its operations more efficient, except when it comes to police service. And I think that the basic question that I have on the expansion of the camera system, and I'm, I'm looking at the FireFolks too, is we certainly have a lot of, not a lot, we have a couple of big projects coming, right? And I've used the stadium, you know, is, you know, as it's going to be sort of up and running, uh, here in the next couple of weeks. And, and police and fire are our biggest cost. And I don't know that we've had any real conversation of what the implications to the budget may be for that specific activity on those two particular departmental resources that will most likely be the, you know, heaviest used for a project of that magnitude. And so, I'm curious if the expansion of the camera program or police operations, um, and capital investment in general will, um, you know, or is being geared toward additional projects, um, or operational requirements for that. And I think that applies to both.
Yeah, I did so.
Yeah. What we're trying to do is build our technology because of what we talked about here over, over again, you know, staffing, getting people into the job and keeping them here and, and getting them in quick enough. So, by expanding our watch center, creating that real-time virtual crime center where we can do everything more virtually and we can actually put eyes on a lot of different places where an officer has to be in a very specific place to see a very specific thing. Using the technology of the camera system allows us to view a lot bigger area with one person that would take eight people to do. So, it, it gives us that affordability. Plus, it's a record. It's a record that's recorded, it's there where something does happen that we can then go back and utilize for prosecutorial reasons. So, it's, it's, it's a, it's a dual thing that, that benefits us there. Adding the cameras does those two purposes, but it also adds the sense of security for people that are attending the areas and going into the areas that they're going into. Knowing the cameras are there, knowing that there's somebody potentially being able to watch those cameras. And again, we can't watch five hundred plus cameras at the same time. But when an event's going on, and we use the stadium as an example, we can watch those cameras. Uh, we can provide that, that security measure by monitoring those specific cameras during a specific time.
And I think. How much will it cost? Like the department to do that? Or, I mean, probably right off the top of your head that you wouldn't be able to say, but I think that's what also a council member should learn is kind of.
To add the cameras or to monitor and submit?
I think what Councilmember Asher is saying, like, what is the cost to, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember, but what is the, what would be the cost to, for fire and police while these events are going on? And, um, is there enough manpower? Is there enough? Or, you know, I think that looking at.
For, for, I can speak for me, I'm going to speak for, for John because, you know, he, he can speak for that. But for me, uh, the, the technology reduces our cost because I don't have to put as much manpower to cover areas that I can view with less staff and put those staff in more strategic places to deal with any outcomes that might be necessary. So, I can actually. So I can actually put less staff in to an area on certain occasions. Uh, and again, it's not just based on generalities. I mean, intelligence that we gather, you know, coming up to events may change that, that structure. But, you know, if we have something that's going to be a little more, um, uh, a major event that, that's bringing in some intelligence that something, something bad might be happening at this event, then I'm going to have staff there. But if it's a general kind of event, we still run the intelligence on that. We, we do determinations and do an analysis on what staffing we do need to provide that adequate coverage. But the camera system, the drones allows us to do less staffing because I can surveil bigger areas with less people.
Yeah, I guess-
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I think it gets back to the comment that I made to you last week after the meeting when I said, you know, with the venue space as large and active as the, the new stadium, you're not really going to know what you need until you know you need it.
That's right.
You know, once it's going. And so I try and envision in my mind when we're talking about, you know, uh, when Michelle's talking about adding cameras and things and expanding that program. You know, we're getting ready to adopt a budget with specific things, right? And I think in my mind, you know, I go to a north or south game. And, you know, it's one thing to say I'm going to assign the school resource officer there for that evening for that particular activity. Um, when you know that that's a larger activity at that school for that evening. No slight on any specific sport, but it may be different for a track meet than it is for the north-south football game.
And it is.
And so I'm just curious, you know, as we set, or as we proceed to set this budget, when I look at both of you and say, okay, are you going to be coming back to us two months from now and go, hey, we didn't realize these level of resources or leads level or these items of capital improvement were going to be needed in the budget? You know what I mean? Um, for this type of venue space because we didn't have that expectation? Or maybe, uh, you know, the venue operations didn't have that expectation at that moment in time?
I am comfortable when it comes to the stadium specifically that we are good.
Okay.
You're not going to be asked-
Because I don't think we've had that conversation or asked either of you at this table-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Until this moment as part of these budget arrangements.
We've utilized, uh, budget, current budget money that we've had that we've repurposed to put the blue light cameras in. Uh, that wasn't part of any additional budget down the road. We had, we found money to make that happen, you know? And we've, we've been meeting- That out as the stadium was coming along.
Yep.
And utilizing money that we already had to get into that so we're not having to budget it.
Right.
It's just entering, you know, she just came up, um, you know, the boss cars are up here and they're saying, and iterating the word safe like four times, you know, in a five-minute presentation, you know? And that rests squarely with you folks as it applies to our ability to deliver that resource.
Well, I would say, yeah, I would say that, that's true too. That's true to a point. Their internal safety, they're taking care of themselves through their hiring their own internal security. But once you get outside, then I think it's, it's imperative that not only, and, and we've talked about this now for dead gum near a year.
Right.
Um, what it's going to take to, we're, we're never going to, we're never going to make everybody convinced that downtown is not a safe place. I mean, bad things, you know, to an extent will happen. Uh, but it's not so much, it's, it's as much the stadium, but it's also looking at the neighborhoods as well. And expanding this camera system out into those neighborhoods where people are asking for more eyes out there that we cannot put a cop out a hundred percent of the time.
So our camera system expansion that we've talked about is, is more core downtown.
Right.
Getting into alleyways, we know we're going to have pedestrians using the alleys now more with, with the, the event structures that are going on. Maryland Avenue expansion, we have no cameras down in the Maryland Avenue area. Fairgrounds, park expansion, camera system, city parky camera system, uh, those are the, those, that's the camera system. We're looking at about a hundred and twenty cameras, Nick, I think, right, expanding overall for a five-year program?
About four hundred cameras.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're looking at those, those positions to, to better cover our overall city. But for the downtown, the stadium's already done. We're, we're ready to go with that. Uh, the additional downtown cameras would be alleyways, things that we know people that don't normally walk in alleyways are going to be using in downtown. So we want to have some coverage for that.
And this, and this group in this body, which we appreciate it, in fiscal year twenty-four, just a few months ago, approved a separate purchase for HPD for the four blue boxes. I think they were about sixty thousand.
Right.
And there was around fifteen cameras? Don't quote me, he's told me a couple of times, but I'm going to, I'm going to forget. So that was it. I think in the overall capital budget and operating budget, again, you don't know until you don't know. Our hope would be that there is enough total funding. So if something happened and we had to have more in one specific area, I think that there is enough within HPD in the two hundred thousand that if we had to shift from one of the areas we specifically identified and put it towards something else, you can do that. I think adding supervisor, the full-time position in the watch center helped. I think all the things that this group did with updating, improving all the maintenance and new features within the Axon system and your cameras to allow you to live stream. Think all of those things we've been working on, we're kind of building up, but it's, it's also to help.
Right.
Not just-
I just want to make sure, again, that you have that adequacy, you know? Once that period arises, I mean, I look at you and say, you, you haven't, or we, I should say, the city really haven't, you know, had to be prepared for thirty-three firework events, you know, over the course of a summer, you know, in a compressed period of time, which will, I just have to assume, will add, you know, to, to your, uh-
That's correct. That's our assumption. So whether you calculate it or, or not.
Like is it apparatus? Is it manpower?
Right now, we're looking at, uh, about ten, eleven firework events and that's the time that fire is going to be required to be in the park. That's going to be an overtime staffing, uh, to cover that, you're about six hundred dollars per event for overtime multiplied by the number of events. In the past, they have placed a fire company out of service and sent the personnel over to the stadium. I don't think that's prudent or reasonable to take a company out of service, delivering service to the community where it's designed to be housed to cover that. So we're looking at overtime cost associated with it. Uh, we have to have firefighters in the stadium, fire marshals in the stadium anytime fireworks are there.
But no different type of apparatus you're going to need or anything like that at this moment?
At station, at station one there on, uh, Potomac, we have a, a Gator or Ranger. It's a, a more mobile unit. And we're looking at a combination of staffing that with, uh, city volunteers and using our career firefighters, uh, to supplement and to add on to the staffing for those events.
I just feel like we're right here at this moment of the budget. We hear this one capital project, you know what I mean? And we haven't had a single conversation about an event space that's going to, you know, sort of go live to, uh, you know, a week.
We won't have, fire won't have a presence in the stadium under normal conditions.
Normal.
Uh, yeah, so it's just the fireworks events and if there's emergency, of course, we call in and we have our resource equipment we bring normally for that.
We anticipate, you know, that in the beginning of the first couple of weeks, the first couple of games, uh, until they get to the main, the, the real grand opening, we'll have additional staff down there because we don't know what human nature of people moving around is. Not really about concerns, but just, uh, helping direct people and get people where they need to go and things like that. Once we kind of get a feel for how people are navigating in and out of the stadium, then we can adjust our staffing accordingly. It's when they have a major event like a concert in August that eight thousand people are going to be at, we'll reevaluate, work with the fire department and work with the, the sheriff's department and MSP has also offered to help us, you know, with the stadium events. Uh, matter of fact, they're going to come down for the first week as well. There's, they, they want to be part of it. Again, just for the learning curve, there's nothing else.
Yep.
Uh, so I think we're, we're confident there and we're, we're very confident with the five-year CIP plan we submitted to Michelle. Then it incorporates all these things we've talked about, the watch center expansion, the drones, uh, first responder program, the, the LPRs, the camera system over the, over the rest of the city. Uh, obviously, anybody would like to have all, at once, but, you know, we're smarter than they know. Let's build our plan, get with Michelle and whoever prioritizing what, what we want, how we need to build it, and we're real confident with that.
You guys good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chiefs. Chiefs, thank you, chiefs.
John also has experience coming from Norfolk, having a triple A facility in town there. So he's been invaluable help, not only to the city, but also to the ball team about whether it be emergency plans, uh, the fireworks, that kind of thing. So that's been a great help.
And I, I think the meetings that the, that Scott is the city administrator has been having incorporating, um, staff from multiple departments along with stadium personnel has kind of helped prep us. So hopefully, again, we're not saying we've built in absolutely every contingency because that's just not possible in hospital.
We still don't know what we don't know yet.
Yes. Could we be back in a couple of months? Maybe. Are we going to find a way to hopefully fund it or going to have to, right? Till we get through the fiscal year twenty-five and then, I don't know, it might come with tissues for fiscal year twenty-six. I don't know. May have tears. Happy tears, yes. Okay, excellent question though. So I think, um, we'll transition that and we'll come back and talk about special revenue funds. So these are governmental funds. These are in section four. And I say the words governmental, but it is a, they're separate funds and it is not directly, um, tax dollars going into these, except for a little bit when we talk about economic redevelopment. It, but they are not funds like the electric funds that charge for a specific service. And the service that they charge has to cover all their costs. It's, it's a different type of fund. So first up, we're going to look at page, let's do page four and five. And I'll talk a little bit about CDBG, our Community Development Block Grant Program. Going to start by saying this, we have not yet received notification of what our fiscal year twenty-five entitlement money is. So most of all the monies that's in this fund, most, is going to be current year and/or prior accumulations of entitlement money received from HUD. It's our federal, federal dollars at work. So on page four, want to just, there's some highlights, right? And CDBG does start on page three, but I'm going to kind of look at a couple of these. We're going to go to page five. This is more a snapshot. So when we look at Community Development Block Grant, it's going to look like several of the things that were reviewed the prior week in the general fund. You have fiscal year twenty-three, and again, these are in dollars. These are not rounded off to the thousands. Fiscal year twenty-three actual, which is audited. Fiscal year twenty-four budgets are our current year budget as well as our estimated actual, where we think we will be by June thirty, as well as our fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget. And then just as a reminder, we're showing a percentage change and that percentage change is comparing the fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget to the fiscal year twenty-four budget. So at the very top, this, this page is a nice page for CDBG because it is, it condenses and puts everything all in a nice summarized level. But you got operating monies, operating revenues, and it looks like year over year that we're doing a, a decrease, uh, from fiscal year twenty-five. Just shy of one point three million compared to the fiscal year twenty-four budget of one point eight. But a lot of that has to do with timing of when we're spending for programs and projects with the entitlement dollars. As well as in fiscal year twenty-four, we actually sold property, two sixty-one and two sixty-three prospect. And we have to account for that and show the cash that we receive for them under, um, operating revenue and then the expenses below. So that will not repeat. We don't have another duplex that we have available and ready for sale. So again, slight decline in revenue. Any expenditures? You see several categories. A lot of these categories have to do and align with, um, national objectives. Different things we have to meet under the federal guidelines. So there is, the second line down is clearance and demolition. I did want to just take a moment to stop there because in that clearance and demolition, you will see that we do have a hundred thousand dollars proposed to utilize in our CDBG money, um, and it is for demolition. Public facilities and improvement, public services, and so forth. Again, so this is grant-based, but what happens is, is, um, we don't get notice from the federal government that says, hey, you get seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Here's your check. We get a notification, you get seven hundred and eighty thousand. We spend the money and then we submit for reimbursement after the fact. So what you see in revenue should kind of be close to the expenditure side. So that's the reason there. But if you turn to page, page six is more breakdown in detail of the summarized version of the revenue. Page seven is going to be much more detailed, seven and eight of those expenses. So on page seven, or on page six, the most important thing for me to point out, I do want to point it out, is at the bottom. Because we are recording and showing the, the grant and the spending, the revenue as we are getting reimbursement drops and then are spending it. What the actual current year entitlement dollars are is a different story at the, at the bottom of page six. So again, fiscal year twenty-three, we had seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars, which was a decrease over the prior year. Fiscal year twenty-four was seven hundred and eighty-one, so a slight decrease, not a lot. So we're hoping to stay flat right around seven hundred and eighty, but again, we won't know until we get that notification. Then on page seven, all those, um, items that we talked about on the expense side, right? Going to have you come halfway down the page because this is federal block money. Halfway down the page, you see the item that says public services. The grand total there will line up with what we showed on the first page. That was a summary. But here you can see the history on what agencies we have given that money to. There's also a little asterix. So when we flip the page, you'll see that the little asterix is there because there is a cap or a maximum that is imposed as a part of one of the regulations and stipulations. So public services, fifteen percent of our current year entitlements. So remember to see your current year entitlement, the nice little chart at the bottom on the prior page, plus prior year program income. So we cannot exceed that threshold in public services. You'll see though, in fiscal year twenty-five, we do have a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Seems to be a decrease over the current year budget of two thirty-one. But as we mentioned last week when we talked about CDBG a little bit, that two hundred and thirty-one thousand actually contains ninety-one thousand, which is CARES money, which will not be duplicated. So without it, fiscal year twenty-four was actually a hundred and twenty thousand. So we're looking at hopefully being able to give a little bit more to these agencies. And, um, Margie Jo and her team will come back and go through CDBG and then cover at that point what the committee selections were on who the entities and the agencies that are going to be the new recipients for twenty-five. Um, housing rehab, important section. I don't, it's not that it's not, I don't want to skip it, but I do want us to turn the page. Because here you're going to see administration and it was in a simple line, right? And now you can see it spread out, again, asterix, the asterix there, excuse me. Or because, again, this is an item that there is a cap in place. Thank you. And this cap is twenty percent of current year entitlement plus current year program income. And for anybody listening, they're going to say, um, Michelle, you just said before, prior year, and now you're saying current year. You flipped something. And the answer to that is no. The federal requirements are two different calculations and two different funding sources. So again, another area for us to be cognizant of. One of the other things that we do and, um, we get with Margie and we do it before April. But at the end of April is a very important, uh, milestone for us on an annual basis with CDBG. And that is we have to hit our timeliness compliance standard. Meaning, we can only have, they're giving us money, they're giving us entitlement money. We don't, we can't just keep not spending it and rolling it and save it. We get a day. So we have to stay within a certain percentage to stay compliant. And we're happy to report, we actually already hit that standard for the year. So, so far, so good. So unless we receive a big payout on loan we weren't expecting, we're not going to be in a mad dash to hurry to get that all spent by June thirty. We're on the right track. Brooke, I'm going to have you do economically development fund unless there's any question for CDBG.
Well, we met a couple of weeks ago about moving some monies from CDBG. You mentioned about the park and I think when I was mayor that day, that discussion. Is that captured in here?
It is. So let's go back. That's, that's actually good because I did not cover that this time. And on page seven. So in the special revenue section for CDBG, go back to page seven, there's a section that's called Public Facilities and Improvements. And there, I don't want to say that it's always one hundred percent city-end projects because there's times that it's not. But for fiscal year twenty-five budget, it actually is. So you can see we got a hundred thousand going towards handicap ramps. We got a hundred and fifty thousand for sidewalks and we got forty, well, the forty thousand is for land, so that's non-city. But, so we have the hundred thousand and a hundred and fifty, that's two hundred and fifty thousand. If you go to the section and one of the charts that Brooke talked about, um, in the capital improvement section and you went by funding source, transfers from CDBG, you'd see two hundred and fifty thousand and you'd see these. The C numbers are the project side and then you could go to the detail sheet to see exactly what encompassed in handicap ramps. But as you can see from- But as you can see from fiscal year twenty-three and fiscal year twenty-four, there was monies throughout for like neighborhoods parks. Most of the neighborhood park was Wheaton. Thank you. Yes.
Brooke, okay. So, moving on to page ten, we'll hit Economic Redevelopment Fund. The main program in here is Invest Hagerstown, so that's pretty much what this entire section, this entire first section, it covers. About a third of the way down, you can see the history of the funding amounts for FY25. There's nine hundred and seventy-five thousand budgeted, and that's an increase year over year from the history. That's due to the dedicated funding from the real estate tax rate, as that increases every year.
So, as the assessed value grows, the amount that we transfer and have available that we give out for incentives grows.
Towards the bottom, you'll see the five categories. That's city center redevelopment, citywide redevelopment, homeownership loan to grant program, rental property rehab, and commercial sign and facade grants. And then the chart at the very bottom goes over actual spend since FY nineteen. And on page twelve, we'll look at expenses and revenues. I will just focus on FY twenty.
I will just say, fiscal year nineteen, that amount was prior to the establishment of the separate tax rate, the one and three cents and everything. That happened fiscal year twenty, so the first year of that was eight hundred. The five hundred and forty-nine thousand from fiscal year nineteen was the final spend that happened when the one point five million, when the program started its first, third program, and came entirely out of general fund balance reserves.
Okay. Page twelve, we'll just look at FY25 proposed budget, which is the second to last column. So, in revenues, we have five hundred and seventy-five thousand in communities, community legacy grants. Have them broken down. Two hundred thousand for the white elephant building redevelopment, two hundred thousand for the upper floor market rate housing, seventy-five thousand for CDC acquisition or rehab of lighted buildings, and a hundred thousand of bring vacant storefronts up to shell condition. And there's twenty-five thousand in interest on investments, bringing it to six hundred thousand in revenues budgeted. Down in expenditures, I'll just highlight a few. The third one down, a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars in PEP subsidized rent payments, thirty-five thousand in general economic incentives. There's the five hundred and seventy-five thousand in community legacy incentives that's basically passed through grants. And then, the next five are the Invest Hagerstown categories. So, there's five hundred for city center, five hundred thousand for city center, a hundred and eighty-five thousand for citywide, a hundred and sixty-five thousand for home ownership grants, eighty thousand for rental property rehab, and forty-five thousand for facades. Total expenditures, about one point eight million. Down further, you'll see one point three million in general fund transfers with nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dedicated to Invest Hagerstown.
And for anybody paying attention and not looking at fiscal year twenty-five budget, and you're looking at fiscal year twenty-four estimated actual old budget, and you say, whoa, you started the year with a fund balance of one point two million, Michelle, why are you going to be down to six hundred, just shy of seven hundred thousand dollars? That is not a reflection of cash. That is a reflection of us selling the property, two sixty-one, two sixty-three prospect. So, I don't want anybody to be informed by that, as we have a lot of conversation around fund balance. Fund balance here, little bit different. So, that is actually a good thing. You don't want us to have a large fund balance and ha, be sitting on properties and not getting it back into the hands of our owners. I know it seems like we rushed that. Do you guys have any questions on these sections?
No.
If not, we'll come back next week. I think what we'll do next week is we'll try, change topics. We'll hit, hit on the electric fund a little bit. We'll look at the golf fund, and we'll also talk stormwater.
Before you go, there were several, I guess we'll call them council initiatives, that the administrator reviewed. Where are you on those? And what questions do you have about any of those?
Um, the ones that we talked about last week?
Yeah. So, we did get, I did provide you information on, and Councilman Alshire also on compensation for elected officials, for you to look at, if that's something you would like to pursue. There is still, um, and, and Councilman Alshire can chime in here. There's still some debate, maybe, about whether a council could grant themselves a raise within their administration, or whether that goes to the next year. As, as the state of Cumberland has developed an ordinance that provided them an up, an upgrade, most of the other municipalities I have talked to that have done that, Martinsburg most recently, will do it in their next administration. They also have an election this year coming. So, that information was provided for you to make, to debate amongst yourselves whether that's something you wanna do. The other, um...
In regard to that, it is my understanding that the adjustment to the council, to the pay is for the next administration.
Okay.
It is not for this current administration at all.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're not looking to change it.
If that's what you all want to do, then that, that would...
Yeah, we're not looking to change it right now.
But I think from a place of this is being an election time, that it would appear that way to the public, that there was, especially for the, maybe not, I don't know.
I think it's a fair, I, I think from my perspective, it's a fair thing for you to review based upon the fact that the, the, the numbers have not changed in...
Right.
Well over decades. The question then becomes whether it is something that would be done this administration or not made effective until the next.
It would not be effective. It would not, from the way I, I mean, I'm just, that's just me.
I don't think, I don't think it was ever an anticipation for any body of the, of the body to change the current compensation.
Correct.
It's all about the next administration, after the next election.
And I, I think one of the things was about whether ordinance or something, and that the conversation, if I'm correct, if I'm correct, the conversation, and it would, it would take longer than like six months, so it wouldn't be able to get done by this, this elected body for the ones coming in anyway. I thought that's where we kinda settled on that, which I don't, I'm not sure. I'm just going back to the, I see your face, Councilmember Perrini, is that, not what you understood from the meeting, as far as the, the council?
I don't, I don't understand six months.
Well, I, because, well, it's about seven, six to seven months left of this administration.
Oh, what's left.
Yeah, and so, one of the things that we talked about was whether there had to be, I'm sorry?
It always was anticipated to talk about the next administration, not this administration. The only reason it came up is cause the city administrator made a comment about what's in the ordinance specifically regarding, I think you mentioned benefits and...
The charter.
Uh, or, excuse me, in the charter.
Right, travel expenses.
Expenses, reimbursement, that's what I recall. Which is not applicable to this conversation either. And then, we kinda went down a rabbit hole of discussion of can you do this or not, but it was never anybody's intention to make any changes.
That's not what I, that's not what I was saying, that to make a change for this administration that was sitting in. I thought that they were to get, and give information to this administration to start the conversation, knowing that it may not happen before the new people came in, the new electives came in in November, that the conversation would just start...
Yeah.
And had begun. That's what I thought we left off of, which is why Scott sent the email, kind of what was happening around us, so that this body can start the conversations and figure out what the process is, you know, that type of thing.
And, and also, if the body felt that for the next administration, you, you did want to see changes in compensation, that, that could be dealt with through the budget amendment process as we get after, after July first.
Right, because the last thing we wanna do is put a, add a line item, and you have to tell me how much it is, and have me insert it into the budget before the code is changed. Like...
I don't understand that. Why would that be the last thing you want to do? I mean, you put money in the budget before projects are bid out? You put money in the budget before purchase orders are made?
That's politics.
I mean, I don't understand why you're saying that.
Because I'm following code, and code literally says and spells out the actual salary, but it literally has one thousand dollar reimbursement for council, three thousand. It literally has a specific dollar amount.
In the charter.
In the charter.
That was, I thought, was the conversation that we would start having during, during this administration to...
Not discount the compensation.
The compensation is in the charter, as far as what the mayor gets paid and what the council gets paid.
It says that it has to be set by...
By ordinance.
By ordinance, for the next group coming in.
That's what it says.
So, but are you telling me eighty-five thousand needs to be added in this salary line? I guess, I guess that's my, I, I kinda hear it two different things. Are you asking me to make changes in the current fiscal year twenty-five budget, or are we saying it's additional conversation that needs to happen outside of the adoption of the budget, and as you talk through those things, we can come back and make budget adjustments?
So, I think two things have to happen. And I know that I sent you guys a chart, and you have to look at it at your leisure, but here is the reality, when it comes to those actions by jurisdictions within the state of Maryland similar to ours. And I looked at, you know, the, the top twelve, meaning the, the top, most populous, you know, have the things that we do most comparable what, what a municipality of our size does. And all but one of them, excluding us, have taken on this task at some point in the last twenty years. And there are two paths that those respective jurisdictions have taken. They either develop a CRC, a Compensation Review Committee, which reviews that on specific intervals, or they adopt a figure that is tied to CPI. If you go one route, the CRC route, then you don't have to change your charter, because you simply have that Compensation Review Committee review that item on a specific interval, make that change on a specific interval, and then, as part of that specific interval, apply it to the next incoming council.
Which is what the county does.
Which is what the county does, which is what our charter provides for now. If you go the CIP route, which says we're gonna set it at eight thousand dollars and it'll be adjusted every year as part of the, the CPI, which is what Cumberland, I believe, did, then you have to change your charter, because you are creating a provision within your charter...
That's correct.
That dictates that it will change for current standing members of the elected body, whenever it takes place. So, it really is a matter, and, and I think that this body could accomplish that task between now and December. I think it's doable. I think it's reasonable. I think that there are clear, you know, evidence from other jurisdictions that have done so. I just think it's a matter of whether you have the decision to tie it to CPI, which requires a charter change and becomes a, a more laborious task, or whether you do a CRC, assign a figure, and then the next incoming council, mayor council, that's the figure it'll be assigned to. I just, when you look at that information, to me, and I think I said this, it's a pretty simple process, and either direction removes the politics from, you know, being at this table. You know, it, it isn't some foreign thing that, that other jurisdictions exactly like ours haven't already done, you know, without any great concern or fanfare.
I, I'm not so sure, looking at the CIP way of doing it, where the charter changed, I'm not so sure there might not be a mechanism that would allow for that increase without a charter change.
As long as you do the ordinance.
As long as you do the or, yeah.
No, that's what I'm saying. If you go the CRC route, you can do it via ordinance. I guess you could, but all the ones I saw that are see, the CPI direction, meaning the Consumer Price Index adjustment, those are all in the charter. So, the ones I saw that are CPI, those are tied to their charter. The ones that are Compensation Review Committee, those are tied to ordinance.
Yeah, I just think the CRC way does invite a little bit more politics than a Consumer Price Index increase. I mean, I...
It does, as long as you choose at that moment some appropriate figure as the starting point. And I think that's the difficulty that I saw, and I think there's four out of the twelve jurisdictions that go to CPI...
Yeah.
Is you can clearly see within their deliberations...
Yeah.
Some consternation over deciding what the appropriate starting point was.
And that, and that's, yeah.
And at least two of those CPI have come back and revisited that...
Yes.
Over time, because the politics associated with the adjustment, you know what I mean? I don't know, of, of, of the CPI sort of not staying with the times of other jurisdictions. But I think between ourselves and, I wanna say Westminster, you know, we're the only folks of jurisdictions of our nature, activity and size, that, that, that have done nothing since, you know, the eighties or nineties. And that just, so, again, you can look at that information.
What, what'd you like for staff to, would you prefer the first option, the CRT?
So, yeah, so, and I appreciate that question, because I think, and this is my two cents, I don't have any real reservation that we can't adopt the budget the way it is, or even with a small nominal change, because when I looked at those comparative jurisdictions, the, the amount came to, you know, if you were to use the, the law of averages and sort of, you know, take out the ones that don't exactly apply to us, if you were to use, you know, take out the ones that have different parameters of governance, you're talking about a whopping like forty thousand dollars. Now, that means twenty thousand dollars for a half year. So, I just think that to come back and do a budget amendment, whether it's for the second six months of a new administration, or whether it's for, you wait till the July one period of, of the next fiscal cycle, to me, it wasn't, when you compare apples to apples of other jurisdictions, it wasn't, you know, some astronomical figure.
And you were comparing in a strong council?
And a weak...
That's what you were saying, you have to... Yeah, it's like Frederick's a strong mayor.
Yeah, you have, yeah, you have to take out those, those jurisdictions that don't operate...
Okay.
You know, similarly, or operate in, in a, in a manner that, that has, you know, other things. And, and there are unique characteristics among both, and I'll give you this example. You know, four out of those twelve have the WSSC, which means they don't even worry about the enterprise system, right? We have a fifty million dollar operations budget...
Right.
On a utility system. You know, most of the jurisdictions don't have an electric, uh, uh, system. You know, we're, we're not the capital of the state of Maryland, so there are unique circumstances, I think, applicable to each of them, but when you get above that twenty thousand population range, most of the large jurisdictions sort of, you know, have a lot of that similar stuff. Most of them don't have fire departments, you know, so we just...
That's the...
So, just, so I'm just saying, like, like...
And electric, those are the two things.
You can't, you can't do absolutes where, you know, you're, you're not like anybody else, because that just...
It's definitely not apples, apples, apples all the time. It's usually...
But there's definitely, if you look at them...
Apples are edges in some way.
So, next week is May seventh. It is also our public hearing night. So, I can do a, a change in your fiscal year twenty-five budget, but I'm not hearing a specific amount, and I'm not hearing how much to put in the mayor budget, and I'm not hearing how much to put in the council budget. I, I will, I will be brutally honest, when I left the table last week, I was under the impression that it was going to be a continuation and a discussion amongst the body, and it would happen over the next six months, and we were coming back to do a budget amendment change at that time. But if that's not the case, please tell me. I, I just need to know dollar amount to do the...
And for me, I, for me, I think... And for me, I, for me, I think the, the important part isn't so much identifying an amount as it is determining. As a body, if you want to implement that process prior to the start of the next administration.
Which by default houses.
And I just don't think the number is enough to like be the driving.
Yeah.
You know.
Makes still sense to me.
Factor associated with that conversation.
So, but, which for, for me, process wise, means I'm not adding it to the May seventh. I'm not adding it into the fiscal year twenty-five budget, but I'll be doing it as a budget amendment. In November or December, whenever the process has been decided.
Whenever you all want to have that conversation, get it on the agenda, you can have it, and then we will come back and provide the budget adjustment numbers. Where it's coming, where that money goes and comes from.
Would you like?
Right. Yes, that's what I expected before. I mean, I don't think it's fair for us to say, like, just come up with some arbitrary number all of a sudden because you've.
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have a preference either.
That's what I'm saying.
If the number were some, you know, measurable amount, I'd feel differently.
Yeah, I'd rather have a little more information before we.
It's not that.
Say a number out.
So we'll wait for our budget amendment, but it will be added back whenever this determines when it needs to come.
But that wasn't.
For a process.
But that wasn't the only one? Is that the only one?
Well, they, they all basically fall in that category too, to come back for further discussion through, through the budget process.
That's the way that, from the last meeting that we had, we had talked about discussing it in further detail.
Right.
On an agenda and then making amendments if we needed to and adjustments.
Including crafting of an RFP.
Including crafting of an RFP.
After, after hearing information.
All the things.
Right.
That is what I understood and the way I'd like to take it.
Are we good?
A lot of more information, more discussion.
More information, more discussion.
For, for all the things we could discuss, for all the things.
Okay.
That works.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week.
Thank you. Where, where are we?
Four, four, yeah.
Four forty-five? Discussing regarding, discussion regarding change in federal law for direct funding to nonprofit organizations related to their application to the economic. Development initiative under housing and urban development, and that is Scott Nice.
I can make this very quick. This has been a, a ever-changing situation since Friday afternoon. Related to federal earmarks to which nonprofits apply for federal funding. Congressman Trump's office contacted me Friday evening and said that there was a move afoot to not, to make nonprofits ineligible to receive that direct funding. That for them, to receive that funding, it would have to go through a local government entity. That was still kind of amorphous up until about four hours ago. Where it was determined after some meetings with, with Congressman Trump's office. That unlike ARPA, where the, the city acted as a pass-through and the entity, the city provided the money to the entity, the entity managed it. The local government would be on the hook, line and sinker for the entire amount of funding that would be received. Which would mean we would have to be the ones to accept the money, we would procure, we would project manage, we would do all of that for the, for the entity. We were not the only government that had that concern in the state. Therefore, after some additional talks this afternoon, the, the Congressman's office decided to not. Support is not the word I want, but not to support the funding of those projects that were in, in the pipeline. For this period for the earmarks and will advocate for them to be funded where there are not these restrictions placed on them on the Senate side. So, everything I was gonna ask you all to do, don't, we don't have to do now because the Congressman has pulled that back.
Just a quick question and not about anything in specific.
Sure.
Specific project or anything, but what you men, what you mentioned about in this general situation of. The current earmark situation.
Right.
In Congress and the, the change in the rules at the last minute. When you talk about where the city would have to effectively be not only recipient of the fund, but. I think what you were saying is the city would not have the ability to pass that through.
No.
So my question is, is that a, a city issue regarding, is, is that because of something that we have, a policy or whatever?
No.
Or is that a federal issue?
Federal issue. Fed, nonprofits were, were deemed ineligible to receive money.
Even, even from a municipality?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So there's, there, what I was getting at is do we need a policy change or anything internally?
No, we were prepared to do what we could do to help in this process. But hearing that we could not operate it as ARPA was, where we could pass some money through and let, and let the, the nonprofit manage the grant. When we found out we would have to do that for the size of the grants that were being, there, it was, it's just impossible. And, and even counties have, have, had made that issue as well, and which is why they, which is why they pulled it.
Okay. Were those entities updated?
Yes, the Congress, yeah, I just got a text that everyone has been contacted. That's it.
Hopefully that's a one-time, in my opinion, short-sighted decision by Congress. Because I'm sure that night, across the nation, that's.
Huge impact.
A lot of nonprofits unable to accomplish projects and, you know, programs that they anticipated to be able to do.
Yep.
Matters who you vote for, I guess.
Anything?
No.
Question?
Thank you.
All right, proposed parking rate changes, Eric Deke, our Director of Public Works.
Yeah, good afternoon.
Theme music.
Here we are again.
Parking on the dance floor.
I'll look at the pictures.
Sir. Yeah, I'll tell you. We good?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. The, like a short update on the parking garage you mentioned earlier. Construction of the parking garage continues on. We're still on track to be finished by the end of June, hopefully open and operating in early July. They've working on pouring concrete on the interior on the first floor. Elevator will be here in two weeks, like May thirteenth is the date. As you've seen, a lot of the exterior signage is on, the large signs, parking or alley access is up. They're starting to work installing all the windows, and so it's, it's moving along, it's moving along, so. Yep, it's looking good, so we're excited. Uh, we had a lengthy conversation last week about parking rates, and I wanted to bring some other information to you. I didn't change anything in the memo or in product, but I looked up today a little bit. And so we have a parking rate for the new garage, which is what we have now, which is a dollar an hour and seventy dollars a month and that sort of thing, if we wanna go that route. I just wanted to share with you, I run a income statement on our parking system every month, just to watch trends, just to see where out in revenue, things like that. So this is from a full fiscal year in twenty-three, so this is from the, the final month of fiscal year twenty-three. And so the university deck generated a little over three hundred and eleven thousand dollars in revenue, which is about seven hundred and six dollars of space annually. The A and E deck generated a little over two hundred and twenty-six thousand, which is about twelve hundred, a little more than twelve hundred of space. And so, the reason I'm telling you that is, is simply, is that at a dollar an hour, even combined, revenue wouldn't cover the debt service. On the new garage at seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or somewhere in that ballpark. So, raising the rates is one way to ensure that we can eventually get the system in the black and operate in the black. There's no debt service on the UD deck that was paid off a long time ago. There's still some remaining on A and E for another year or so for the debt service on A and E, yeah. But it's coming, it's coming, and that, and that project was about three and a half million for that parking garage. So I just wanted to provide some numbers. There was something else we talked about last week was validations. Councilman Olschauer, you mentioned something about that. Last year we generate, in that fiscal year, we generated over twenty-eight thousand dollars in validations. So there are a number of organizations that use it pretty heavily, so it's a pretty good revenue generator, and it's very convenient for those that do use it. We do take, you know, we do pay for twenty percent of that, but they absorb eighty percent. And like I said, the court system is, is, is on it now, and so it's a very good system for those that use it and know how to use it, so. So, a little bit about last week, we went through quite a bit. I can't say that we came to a consensus on anything.
No way.
Trying to be, trying to be kind, so we got as far as the hub city garage. And I'm still staff recommending the three dollar an hour there and a tiered like three there, two at A and E and a dollar at UD. Only change I would say is that the max, if we're, if we're gonna do a dollar, the max should be based on eight hours, it'd be eight hour max for that. Sixteen if it's two dollars an hour and twenty-four if it's three dollars an hour would be the cap. So I'm still set at that. We did talk about events. We kinda started getting somewhere there, but it kinda became this five hundred people in attendance, and that would only, that would only affect really a couple venues. The, the ballpark for sure and Maryland Theater. Having an event rate concerns me something because it, the owners is put on staff to constantly change it. And so the drivers would be like, well, Monday I didn't have to pay a special rate, why tonight? Well, there's a ballgame. Well, I'm not going to the ballgame, I'm going to get dinner. And then that's over, and then Friday there's an event at the theater, and so every night we're trying to figure out, at least in the ball season, what we're doing. I still prefer the month, the, the hourly rate and see how that pans out. Another we talked about a little bit was parking permits or parking passes. Councilman Parini had mentioned something about not selling any in the new garage, and I actually.
Just as a.
A starter, yes.
Temporary.
Yeah.
Moratorium.
Yes, and I, and I understand that, and I'd actually suggested that to staff some time ago. But I've kinda come around to thinking we need to sell some, and we could cap it at whatever, whether it's a hundred or a hundred and fifty. And the Councilman Olschauer's, I think he mentioned something about how would we do that with businesses. It's basically first come, first served. If we cap it at a hundred and we get to your business and you need ten and we only have five left, you get five, and that's it. Because we're getting a lot of interest, like from the court and others who wanna have permit parking in there. And so I think if we do zero, we're gonna get a lot of pushback on that. What the right number is, I don't know, but we could certainly cap it, with three hundred and ninety-eight spaces, we could cap it at one fifty or something like that and see how it goes.
When you mentioned court, are you talking about the district court?
Yes.
I thought we just did, didn't we just do an ordinance or something that basically provided them.
We do.
Passes in the university deck?
No, Rochester lot. The district court has eighteen spaces in the Rochester lot, and they, they used to be in the, in the parking lot, but we had to. They didn't wanna, they didn't wanna go over to the university deck, so they went up to the Rochester lot. But they're doing one year, I mean, they're, they're waiting for this to be built so they can, they can move in.
And, and how many was that?
Eighteen, yeah. But we know there's others. We know there's others that are anxious to get in there.
And the roughly thirty that we had already agreed to.
Correct, the thirty-three for the other. But they, we've only sold four to them so far. Yeah, they're only gonna buy them, they're only gonna issue them, I should say, as they fill the Uptograph Building. So if they filled it today, then we get all thirty-three, yeah. But right now they're, they're at four, and they've been open a couple months, I guess. So, I'm not sure where, where it puts us.
Just a short comment.
Yep.
The reason I, again, the reason I suggested somewhat of a moratorium, which is kinda like what Chief of Police said, the Fire Chief said about getting, figuring things out. And how's this stadium gonna affect everything, even the city engineers, trying to figure out how's this gonna affect pedestrian traffic and so forth. We don't know what we don't know. That's why I was suggesting some kind of short-term moratorium. And that is specifically because. I personally don't feel that people understand that when they buy a pass, they may or may not be able to park in that garage. Even with a paid prepaid electronic pass. That's my concern, and I guess you can, we can do all the bulletins and flyers and notices that we can. But that's my concern, that they're gonna show up with their badge, their pass, like anybody else that buys a seventy dollar a month pass. And the machine is gonna, the lights are gonna come up and say, full.
You're saying like the folks that may have a pass that may work at the courthouse but may come to a game and wanna use their same parking thing as you would, and then get in there and can't get.
Yeah, that's a good example. Or, or, or a baseball fan that says, oh, I, 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 I can afford, I'll just pay a pass. I know I'm only going X amount of times, but I just don't wanna have to be mess, messing with, you know, paying, paying, I'm just gonna pay for a pass. And they show up and the sign says full. That's what my concern is, that they don't, they don't understand it. And I don't think they're gonna understand it as, even as much as explanation that could be provided. I just, that was my, that's why I made that recommendation.
Completely understandable, and yes, we have that happen now. No, no doubt about it.
Yep.
Not often, but it does happen, but it's rare. The, the deck that we have that fills the most up is A and E. And I don't know if we have that issue happen very often or not. Like I said before, we have two hundred and nine passes sold for a hundred and five, eight five spaces.
That huge board of bed thing happened in downtown. That's the only time I can remember.
During the day, yeah.
Isn't that something that's somewhere else with passes that, like if you have a pass at a parking, do you know that, that other areas or jurisdictions, that it doesn't guarantee a parking spot? Is that something that's common in, in places, or is it like a?
Industry would tell you if you sell a parking permit, you shouldn't sell that space. We just, we wouldn't survive that way. It just wouldn't. We don't really have an issue with the UD deck because it's only operating at fifty percent capacity or under. A and E's the one that's always tricky, and again, we know how it operates based on experience. You're correct, we don't know what we don't know, but what we do know is, I have experienced since two thousand and nine, working in the garages, she's been working for a number of years with us. And so we, we have a feel for how this is gonna go. The ballpark is a new animal, no question about it.
I was gonna say, you've never had to deal with.
It is. No, you're right.
Four thousand seat venue before.
That's correct. You're not wrong. But my, my point being is that, that so far, we don't have an issue with those that have a permit or pass and then return that night. It happens occasionally, but not very often. It seems like the people that are coming back downtown aren't the ones that are working downtown necessarily. I mean, I, I have no way of proving that other than we don't have a lot of conflict with the very thing you're talking about.
The thirty-three passes that you mentioned, what?
Yes.
Who is that?
That's to the Uptograph Building. It's developed, it's for the developers of that, yeah.
So they're effectively providing parking for the people that are buying the residences there.
That's correct.
And so those people will absolutely come and go, just like you come and go from your home all the time.
Yes.
Right.
And we spoke to.
And that's thirty-something, eventual.
It'll eventually be thirty-three, right now it's four. When we spoke to the owners, the owners, developers of that property. They clearly understood that those, those residents may not have parking in there.
And again, they might understand it.
Yeah, I.
But the person that lives on the fifth floor who's coming home.
Yeah.
From, fill in the blank.
Yeah.
Doring a game.
Yep.
And they show up to park in their garage, just like you show up to park at your home. And imagine you get home and the sign says, full, you can't park here. That's the feeling that they're gonna have. That's why I'm.
Okay.
Again, I'm, I'm gonna stop there.
I, I, I understand.
Give any more examples.
Soon. You have a number of recommendations here. Yes. Just me, my two cents, I feel like the easiest way to get through this is just to go through each one. Okay. And reach consensus. Okay. I, I don't know how else to do it.
Me neither.
Have more. Sure, never works for you.
Me neither.
I'm here all night.
I'm not.
Well.
Yes.
Yes.
One through five.
I agree that it should open in July of two thousand twenty-four. So number one is done.
Well, yeah, on page two of the of the memo.
On page three.
And then he's moving on to page three.
Page three, top of the page.
Yep, top of the page.
Charge an hourly rate of three dollars for all hours except for the Sunday free parking, which is six AM to two PM. That's recommended.
She's got it.
Discuss later in this document. Maximum daily rate would calculate to twenty-four dollars, which is eight times three.
Currently parking is free in the garages on Sundays. We're recommending a change, which was on the next slide, which was the limit free parking on Sundays from six AM to two PM.
Correct.
At the churches and whatever and happen. And then, and that's similar to what Frederick does. There's a window they give and then they start charging again. And partly because we know there's gonna be Sunday games.
No Sunday, there won't be a Sunday game before two o'clock.
Before two o'clock, right, before two o'clock.
Right.
It'll be after that time.
I'm good with the Sunday six to two.
Okay. All right, we got one.
You just heard one person.
Okay.
I am too.
Sunday six to two.
Okay.
All right.
That sounded forced.
So
No, 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 I'm thinking about something else.
Shelley, it just sounded like a
All right.
The one at the top though, A. We didn't seem to agree on the three dollars an hour or the twenty-four dollar max.
You mentioned Frederick a second ago.
Yeah.
Did you look at their rates?
These?
Yes.
Yeah, so
They have five garages, they charge a dollar an hour, they charge twenty-four seven, they do have a window on Sundays. This is a brief summary, they have a twelve dollar max, they have a weekend and nightly special of five dollars like we had for two dollars. And their non-reserved monthly passes is ninety-seven, it goes up from there. Their lots are very small, they have five parking garages.
They keep it simple.
Yes.
I mean, both them and Winchester look like they keep it simple.
And then Winchester, which is, which is a smaller population.
All of their garages, right?
Yes, that's my understanding, yes.
The only question I had about theirs was the non-reserved monthly fee or monthly pass, I don't know what that means.
That's what we charge the seventy bucks for.
I think it's the same thing, you don't get a guaranteed spot.
But ours are for specific decks.
Yes.
Theirs are not.
They're, I don't know the size of all their decks, but I think they're all similar in size.
They're all differently located.
They're all differently located. I don't know if the, that the permit moves from garage to, I don't know that. I'd have to find out.
But that's what that's referring to, okay. I just, I didn't understand what that meant. That's helpful.
We, we have a space that we advertise that if you want that space to be guaranteed, it's a hundred and twenty a month. And since two thousand and nine, we've sold two. One in UD and one recently in A and E.
Yeah.
Can I get your name on it, where it has just your space?
We just say it's reserved.
Yeah, reserved.
And a hundred and twenty, most people are like, no.
The one in A and E has a name on it.
Has a business name on it.
Yeah, I think so.
So the hourly rate of three dollars an hour and twenty-four bucks a day.
For that one lot.
For Hub City.
For just that one deck.
Yep.
I do not want it to be three dollars. I would be, me firstly, I would be okay with two. It's just me. And maximum.
Sixteen, two times eight, sixteen.
Sixteen, maximum sixteen.
Yeah.
I mean, most people aren't gonna park in a garage more than eight hours. They're just
Unless they have
Actually, can I ask you a question about that?
Oh, sure.
You've kinda focused in on the, to create the maximum by using the multiple of eight hours.
Yes.
Can you remind me where that
Basically an eight hour workday is what it is. And so you can use, you can use that number, yeah.
It's a multiple of twelve.
Yeah.
Half a, half a twenty-four hour day.
For some reason they've used a different number, yeah.
Is there, is there magic to one or the other, or do you
What, what I think is
What death service you're trying to
What's that?
What death service you're trying to
That's exactly my point.
As I've heard, whatever gets us in the black.
If we go to two dollars
And if you got five of them, yeah.
If we spend two dollars instead of three
It'd be two dollars.
If we use the eight dollar, eight hours, it's sixteen dollar max. Whereas if you use twelve hours as the multiplier
It's twenty-four dollars max.
Okay, so now you're potentially on those situations collecting more money, even at a lower hourly rate.
I mean, there's magic.
I would be okay across the board using a twelve hour multiplier versus
Instead of an eight.
Hour multiplier.
If we go down to two.
Well
If you go to two.
I prefer to go down to two, but I'm not saying it's contingent with that.
If it went to a twelve hour, twelve hour rate.
You said he'd be okay with two.
I'd be
Regardless with the eight hour?
Say it, say it.
No, no, I'd be okay with two if we're doing that twelve hour multiplier.
Right.
Okay.
Unless there's some other number you suggest.
An apple's street.
Is there another number you'd like?
That is, an apple's is twenty-four dollars.
Two with the twelve hour calculator, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Three dollars an hour, twenty-four.
You have three people at two with a twelve hour calculator.
I think the twelve hours, I think you're hearing
Yeah, and we're good with two.
Got four people with that and
I'm okay with two dollars.
A Sunday at two, six, seven.
And the public should know, we may go broke doing this, but like this
Come on, Chris.
We're not broke, you know what I mean? We're guessing.
Don't throw that on the table.
We're guessing, that's what I mean, we're guessing at the moment.
It's a lot easier to raise than it is to lower.
Talk about raising.
Okay, so two dollars
Raise one thing.
And then the twelve dollar multiplier would be across the board, right?
We would, I think
Would it be across the board?
Yeah, I think that's simple.
Yes.
It keeps it simple.
Make it, yeah.
So in the next part of that, is the, we do a two hour at A and E and a dollar at UD?
So is it two dollars for all?
Two dollars for all.
All across the board, twenty, twelve hours.
Simple, simple.
All right.
But what about that?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Every deck.
All right, I got you.
Two and twelve.
Every deck, with a twelve hour calculator.
But I wanna ask a quick question, just to make sure it's asked. My understanding is, because I just got my printout of the weekly report, thank you staff for this, I do read it. Hang on, I'm gonna get to the page.
I mean, you better tell if you read it.
Looking, looking at the A and E parking deck, weekly occupancy and the university deck. Is it university deck, parking deck?
It's university district.
Oh, university district, excuse me. So the utilization of the university deck is lower overall.
Yes.
Yes.
So my question is not going against keeping it simple, but is there just thinking out loud, is there a potential opportunity to kinda drive people no pun intended, to the less utilized deck, which is, which is a little bit farther away of what is now becoming the center of the universe, the stadium. You know, for, at least for the time being. If not, if it's not that big of a deal, then I don't, I just, I just wanna ask the question.
Let me give you this piece of information and also from the income statement, from fiscal year twenty-three. So the permit parking in UD was two hundred and forty-three thousand. The transient parking, meaning hourly parking rate, was forty-three thousand, a fraction of that. For A and E, out of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, ninety-seven thousand was transient parking.
Wow.
And that's why I said before, the difference between these two garages is dramatic in how they're used.
It's a one block.
It almost wanna keep the, it almost wanna keep the, the educational district area lower because people are clearly using it for longer hours.
This is used for working, people that are working in these few blocks. That's used similarly, but at night and weekends because they wanna park there and walk right over to the Maryland Theater and the other businesses that are in that block. And that's, and that's, tells the story right there.
Give and take.
So violates the keep it simple method, which is, I, I like the keep it simple method.
You're calculating it at the specific deck. I'm okay with one dollar an hour at that deck.
At UD.
Keep it UD, one dollar.
But I still like the twelve hour multi-
I still like the twelve hour.
With twelve dollars.
Twelve hour multiplier too.
And then two dollars for the other two decks with the twenty-four dollars.
The educational deck is gonna change.
I think it definitely will change and I think we'll adapt to that next budget cycle, or whoever will. Yeah, I think certainly it was a flop. At that point.
We should have like intermission.
Bloopers.
Okay, so now the question is, is it even worth going through that? I don't know, I'm just asking.
I do.
Worth it or what?
I only say, I believe that because
One dollar.
Because it's clearly already up and functioning in a specific manner. I would rather react to it if that manner changes than I would impose that upon folks ahead of that happening and it not, and then suddenly they're bearing a cost that was unnecessary to begin with.
In other cities with stadiums are is the parking rates different if the farther out you go? Like, we're talking a block here.
I know, we're talking a block.
We're talking one block.
And it makes a huge difference.
No, I mean, I can tell you, I can tell you like at, at Nats Park, you're paying forty-five dollars to park.
That's DC now.
Pretty much anywhere in there.
Hey, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm
Otherwise you're paying the park.
So Frederick keeps it consistent, Winchester keeps it consistent.
Yeah.
You know, everything is, it's, it's just
I mean, I can go either way, I'm just asking the question.
So if you go to a commander's game, is it, you know, different lots have different prices?
I don't go to it.
Probably.
Ravens game, I can tell you, I know Ravens games. That is, that is
It was a trick question.
Lots, lots are usually different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lots are usually different, further out you are.
So let me ask you this, which, which I should've made more clear on this, which is we currently are charging those rates from six AM to four.
I'd say all three across the board seems
Do we wanna charge that rate twenty-four hours a day? There's no special rate after hours.
I'm definitely interested in that other bullet point on here.
Okay.
Of changing hours.
I didn't understand your question.
Where are you at?
So currently, currently, what I'm getting at is currently we charge a dollar an hour to park from six, for any hour between six AM and four PM. After four PM through the weekday, it's just a two dollar flat rate. And same on the weekday.
Yeah, I wanna change that.
We don't want, we don't want
No.
Oh, okay. You just wanna charge it two dollars an hour?
Two dollars an hour, in my mind, every deck.
At a max.
At a max.
At a max of twenty-four.
Okay.
Two dollars an hour, every deck keeps it easy.
Okay, I'm fine, that's fine.
Two dollars every deck.
I'm excited about this, but okay.
Don't park there.
Yes, three?
Are you okay?
Tiara, two?
Change to twelve hours to twenty-four hours?
No.
No, not twenty-four.
Two, two times twelve.
Twelve is still the max.
No, twenty-four dollars.
I'm like, wait, what? Yeah, okay, I'm fine with that.
Twelve hours, twenty-four hours.
And we're, we're Sunday six to two
Free.
Free, and then after that it goes back to two dollars an hour, twelve, twenty.
Other than
The most you'll pay is twenty-four bucks if you leave it.
Yeah, this one's gonna be a dollar an hour, right?
No, no.
Everybody, every, all of them is two dollars an hour.
Can I ask you a procedural question? You know, your software question or whatever? So Sundays are free
Without special events.
From six AM to two PM is what you proposed and what they just agreed to.
Yes.
Okay, so I come in and park at eight AM. Okay, and then I stay for the baseball game or anything else.
Right.
So I'm there after two. My car's in the garage.
Yep.
Did I get a ticket when I came in at eight to make sure that when I leave after two that the appropriate amount is calculated?
We will have to change our procedure, because usually Sunday's free and the people that are coming and going that day, the gates raise automatically. So we'll have to look at how that works. I'm sure Frederick can do, we can do.
So you're gonna get back to it.
Honestly, we're still new, we're still gonna have to learn the software.
We just did a software upgrade, right? So you're still figuring that out.
We've, we haven't installed it yet.
We have purchased it.
We have purchased, that's correct.
We did it.
Which is right.
We, the Ravens game had parked in the casino parking lot at eight forty-five, so you can get in there for free before they charge you a hundred bucks to park there.
They charge that?
A hundred bucks?
It was always free.
Hundred bucks. That's why I was saying, that's when he, about parking decks.
Parking now, I got locked in the parking garage unless it's a parking, because I came in after eight.
So we're good, two dollars.
We're on number three.
We're on number three?
I believe so, right?
Wait, did, wait, a special event?
I thought we got rid of special.
Oh, no special, okay.
I just wanna make sure that
Yeah, that was a big X for me.
Sundays, okay.
No, no special event.
Somewhere on three, raised the street.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're on B.
Yep.
Great.
Okay.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Monthly parking rates.
So this was the tier ninety, eighty, seventy?
I'm good with that.
Good, I'm good.
It's a bargain.
Is that third?
Okay.
So that's gonna also drive traffic to the lesser utilized
That's the hope, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I still think you should have a moratorium of two or three months to see how it should go, but I'm not gonna say that anymore.
But of what?
Of the, of the Hub City Deck passes. I understand the issue with the, with the residents and I understand the court and blah, blah, blah. I'm, I'm just really concerned that there's a misunderstanding of how that works. So
We, we can, we can do that.
I just don't want the deck to set empty all morning, all day, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Well, because there's two users, so people use it during the day.
Take it for, for two months.
Well, I think that's
Well, okay.
Kristen?
It's sixty, it would be sixty.
I think you have to sell some. I don't know what that number is.
Okay.
But I think you have to offer some.
The cap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll start at something low, like a hundred.
And then kind of count it.
I think a hundred is a, I think a hundred's a perfectly reasonable cap.
Okay, let's try that.
Um, are there any stipulations on who? Like, do you have to be an optograph or?
First come, first served.
Or is it just first come, first served?
I think it's the only fair way to do it.
Okay.
I had written down.
You hit that everybody, first come, first served.
You had what?
Living downtown, you have written down.
In that area, but I don't, there's no way that you're going to be able, I mean, you know, John Smith could get it for his, right, his buddy Bobby Jones, you know what I mean, just.
Yep.
John Smith or Bobby Jones.
Okay, so limit, limit, just at the hub city deck, limit to one hundred monthly passes.
And to see how it goes.
All right, yeah, first three months.
For the first couple, three, two, three months, three months, let's say till Labor, July, August, September, so till October first. Then you can bring, come back and we'll reevaluate.
No, I think that's good.
Yeah, that's fine.
October first, first meeting in October.
Shell, you go with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Now we're on number three.
All right.
Okay. So this is about, let's see here.
It says Blue Forest. I thought we decided no special event rates.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
We did, we're probably, we're, we're gonna pass.
Where are we then?
So number three is about.
But where are number three?
Number three.
So currently, the, the parking meter rate is fifty cents an hour. And going back to Frederick, they charge two dollars an hour in their downtown. Outside the downtown, there's, there's hour parking in their lots, it's an hour and a, and in Winchester, it's even seventy-five cents. And Winchester's a smaller town. So it was twenty-five cents an hour from nineteen eighty-six until two thousand and twelve, I believe. And then in two thousand and twelve, we changed it to fifty cents. So it's been a while.
I'm okay with increasing it.
Let me ask you a quick question. So meter parking has, is a whole different philosophy from garage parking, right? Meter parking is designed to keep people moving along.
Yes.
It's why there's a two-hour limit, you're not supposed to quote, quote unquote, feed the meter.
Hmm.
Um, it's, it's designed to keep traffic flowing, so shops and restaurants and other places, people that are coming for, coming and going for meetings, have a place to park. So, uh, when you talk about raising the street, and I assume the same is true for our lots, our surface lots.
Correct.
That we really aren't anticipating people, it's not designed for people to just park there all day. So my question is, if we change the rates and anything else regarding meters, there has to be an enforcement. In a parking deck or parking garage, you kind of have this mechanical arm that's your enforcer.
Correct.
Okay? That doesn't exist out on the surface and on the streets.
Correct.
So it sounds to me like we're going to have to have more quote unquote enforcement to ensure that the meters are actually being, uh, you know, util, paid.
Right.
So how does that factor into your equation?
We, we have enforcement officers that, I can't tell you when they work, obviously, they work different hours to enforce. They don't have to be out all the time, you just have to know they're out there. And so that's how we enforce it.
Oh, I have to.
If you, if you're.
I'm aware they're there.
Yeah, if you're, if you're paying with the, with the app, the app will know when your time is up, right? And so our enforcement can check that, so even if there's, if they go by and it says it's free, or it's flashing, it's, they still may have paid on the app. Yeah, it's not, it may not be expired.
Yep.
But our staff can check that sort of thing. To your point of encouraging parking and moving people along, point four goes to that, which is, in certain areas, we would raise it to two dollars. For the very reason you're talking about. And what I'm talking about is of Washington Street from Jonathan to the square, because those spaces are used the heaviest. Almost any day you go down there, you only find a few spaces. And the reason is for everything you're saying, which is people will feed the meters if they get away with it as well. And so that encourages people to park there for a short period of time and move on.
Eric, can you go back to the Frederick comparable rate?
Nope.
It's higher.
So their, their immediate street parking downtown is two.
Yep.
Two dollars. Two dollars.
Outside of.
So where would your, if we were going to like tier it like that?
The dollar would be everywhere except on that, I'll say, two blocks of Washington, from Jonathan to, um, the square. Everywhere outside, it would be a dollar. The Antietam Street lot, which is eighteen spaces by District Court, would be two dollars, the same as the deck. I think it was the only two places I was. Um, I suggested Austin, it was a Hager lot, but I'm sure about that.
What, on what percentage maybe, or if you can tell me home numbers either way, how many of our, our surface or street parking meters are coin? And how many are the new kind where you, there's no meter, there's just.
A sign?
Uh, a kiosk.
There's no, we have no kiosks.
We don't do that.
No. We, every, the only, the only lot right now that I'm, you can correct me if I'm wrong, would be the Antietam Street lot, has no actual meters. The Market Lot was another one, but we sold that property.
So you're saying it's all by app? There's no kiosk because it's all by app?
Correct.
And there's no little ticket you put in your windshield, it's just by what, your license plate number?
Yep. Okay.
Which.
And so.
So the enforcer can see.
What's that?
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, it drives my, a couple of my friends insane that are older that refuse to go digital. Um, and it, when they go down to like court, it drives them insane because they're not, they prefer to be able to put coins in, and so it just drives them insane that. They don't know how to use the app at all, the older people.
Part of the reason we, we did that was, part of it was theft. Those people that go to court are in there at least four hours. And so they were either putting four quarters in or eight quarters in, and so the thieves knew that those meters were full.
Yep.
And we got hit, and got hit, and got hit, and we had no cameras. And the police were good, because they wouldn't just hit those meters, there was other places, and HPD did a great job. Many times we called them, many times we didn't, so that was part of the reason.
Got it.
And the other reason was, if you're sitting in court on the app, you can add time. You're not running back out, because anybody that's been to court knows, you could be there a long time.
So uncertain.
Even though you're supposed to, you're thinking you have a court at nine, at one o'clock, you're still wondering what's going on.
So uncertain, in certain, uh, spaces, we're not trying to move them along. You can just keep adding time.
Well, no, they're all, well, yeah.
Lots.
Yeah, the lots are, the, the streets are limited to either thirty-minute or two-hour meter. The lots are, the lots you can park there all day.
So.
You can feed the meter for eight hours if you want to do that, that's fine.
Okay.
So if we did what you're saying for like premium downtown street parking, that is limited for two hours, correct?
Correct.
On those.
Correct.
So the maximum is four.
Or thirty minutes, it's either.
Thirty or, right, so, and you can't extend your time there, correct?
Correct.
I mean, I think I've tried, but I don't know, I can't.
You can drive, you can be recorded to another space and that sort of thing, but most part it's designed that you shouldn't be able to do that, but there's always a way around some.
I personally would be okay with two dollars an hour in the premium lots, or premium parking, and a dollar for the other.
I'm sorry, the other lot is Rochester Lot, in the lot itself, it's, there's no meters in there. There's permit parking allowed in the app, but you also have metered parking on the street there, on Washington and on Prospect, at least to a certain point, from Washington to basically. Prospect has meters from Washington up to the, to the Women's Club. After that, it's, because it's mostly residential after that.
So in my mind, premium parking would also include parking that is, um, close to walking distance of the stadium, to, to Meredith's Park. Whatever that might look like.
Most of the games are in the evening and most of the business are.
True.
A lot of the people downtown are government, right? There's a lot of us that park downtown, Washington County. When it's games are in the evening, a lot of that spaces is, is open, so I wouldn't really, I wouldn't really push that.
What are the current meter times?
Nine AM to five PM.
And weekends?
Free.
Both Saturday and Sunday?
Correct.
I noticed in Frederick last weekend that were not free on Saturday.
That is correct.
Um.
He smiled a little.
But you have, but you have to have, you have to have some enforcement.
Yeah, they have enforcement on Saturdays.
Yeah, and that's, we're strong enough to find employees to do.
Which is what generated my question a few minutes ago, because I noticed at the same place I went, you know, I'm digging out quarters, and which, you know.
Yep.
Fortunately, I had some, um, other people just ignored it. And I guess it's, you know, you're rolling the dice, but, um, my concern with meter parking in general, lot or street, is there's a balance. I understand you're coming from the perspective of revenue enhancement, but I feel like there's a balance for the patrons of the parking spaces. Uh, and I, I struggle with that, because, pardon the phrase, I don't want people to feel nickled and dived when we're trying to get them to come downtown. So I'm not sure.
Literally nickled and dived.
Literally. I'm not sure how I feel about raising the meter rate. Uh, I understand you make all very good compelling points, and I'm not saying they're, you know, that they're inaccurate, but I think, I think everything is true. I'm just concerned with the philosophy of what we're, what we're trying to accomplish in two, from two different perspectives.
I, I understand, I, believe me, I understand, I've been doing this for a long time, so.
I bet one dollar across the board.
One dollar across the board.
Premium locations, because I want people to actually stay.
Okay.
But it's only a maximum in the premium spaces of two hours, so it's four dollars. You can't, or else you're getting a ticket.
Well, if it's a dollar an hour, it'd be two dollars.
Right, so it's two dollars more.
You can go into a dollar an hour, you're doubling the rate, and so that's gonna generate a fair amount of revenue, and it's not all about revenue.
Because currently it's fifty cents an hour.
But, you know, there are expenses, and we are building a twelve and a half million dollar, and the, my point being is, you can't raise enough money out of that single garage that pays the debt service, you can't. You have to use the other garages and street parking enforcement revenue to pay for that debt service. And so if you want to go to a dollar an hour everywhere, okay, I'm okay with that too. It makes it simpler for staff and us.
So you're talking about street and lot?
Sure.
Yep.
So basically a quarter every fifteen minutes.
Yep.
And do we have any, maybe I should ask Michelle this question. Do we have anything in our capital improvement budget to, um, start converting any other meters to some kind of, and I heard what the mayor said, and I agree a hundred percent, because I don't use a parking lot. I don't know why, I just, I can, but I don't, I don't, I, I, I save all my quarters and throw them in the cup in the, in the car. Um, is there any kind of hybrid, you know?
We have those.
Just so you understand.
You can pay on the app or on the.
Every, every street meter that we currently have, you can use cash.
You can use.
Every street meter.
You can use.
Yep.
Yep.
Every meter in the central lot, yes, you can use coin.
Coin.
Yep.
Every parking meter in the central lot, Elizabetha Lot, you can use coin.
Okay.
The only place you can't is the Antietam Lot and the Rochester.
I'm saying, do we have, are there any hybrid meters that if you want to pay using quarters, or if you want to use your app?
We have those.
That's what it was.
They're, they, they do both?
That's what we have, yes.
Yes.
And so we have an adoption rate, at least last time I checked, it's been a while, we have adoption rate of the app of about thirty percent. So about at least thirty percent of the people that park are using the app and not coins.
Nice.
So when the enforcement goes through, they have to do, do two checks. Is the thing flashing because there's no money in it? Or is the thing flashing because the app is running? So they have to check both the.
They just have to check the app. If the app says, if there's nobody using that app, that's clearly expired and they didn't put money in.
You can see it flashing.
Yeah, I can see it flash, it's, it's that pretty easy. And the reason we went with the app was, because any other system, like if you bought it, there's, there's meter heads where you can buy, that has, you can swipe a credit card. But every one of those has to have a Wi-Fi signal, and each of those is like six hundred, or at least it used to be about five or six hundred dollars.
This way, there's just a serial.
And so, and this one, yeah, you put a sticker on there and you set up the system and you're done. I mean, it's very inexpensive to set up.
Share tickets.
And last question on this, the, the meters that are on the street where you can use the app.
Yes.
Can you keep adding to that?
To the extent that they're on meter, on the streets, it's a two-hour limit or a thirty-minute limit.
Even through the app?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, you can't use the app to cheat the system.
So one dollar across the board?
That's what I'm hearing, yep.
All right, Krista?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
We'll revisit Saturday.
Well, no, but it's.
Cedar, you're not okay with it.
I know, I'm not either, but I'm gonna.
You're not okay with it then, then why not?
I'm not gonna die on that hill.
What?
I'm good.
Okay, so we're at number five on page four.
I thought we were done.
No, sorry, sorry. Well, I thought if I'm gonna get this chance, I'll also.
We gotta run the whole way through.
So I'm the student.
No, we're not, we're at four B.
Oh, sorry.
I only say that because it says the rate would be set at three dollars per hour to match the hub city garage, if it says that.
Based on earlier where we said three dollars. If you want to match it up, we could make it two. Do you want to do that?
Thirty-nine, two states.
What?
Okay.
The Antietam Street parking lot says that we were gonna set that at three because the hub city garage was gonna be set at three, but if we're setting the garage at two, then we should probably set the lot at two.
You're saying.
That's different from the one dollar.
You're saying a dollar.
Yes.
Just that lot.
Uh-uh.
We, we were just talking earlier about setting all the rates.
I thought the dollar, I thought the dollar was to the meters on the street.
And the lot.
And the lot.
And the lot, yeah, it's all.
Okay, I didn't understand.
Antietam right now is actually set a little higher. It's fifty cents on the street and lots, except in Antietam, it's a, it's a dollar.
Okay.
So.
Already a dollar.
It's already a dollar, yep. Yep. Because, as you, as you said last week, supply and demand.
It was just for street.
Now, we are gonna build more supply.
Well, Antietam Street, in my opinion, Antietam Street Lot is a totally separate thing from all of our other surface parking.
Okay.
Because of the fact that it basically is the parking lot for District Court.
So can we go back to clarifying that we're having consensus for one dollar an hour for just the meters? And then have another discussion for the lots?
Could we, could we do that? It's a one dollar for the street meters.
And then have a, have a consensus on that, and then.
Kind of what I thought we would do.
And then the lines. Yeah.
The, the, the central lot here is, is currently the same as on the streets.
Correct.
And I'm gonna keep, keep it as same, so if you do the street meters a dollar, I'd be okay, a dollar here.
Right.
The only one I think we need to really change is Antietam.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
And if you're good with that, we can change Antietam to match the garage, which would be two dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that work?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Antietam is a different animal from all the other lots.
Two dollars.
And, and also what's changed there is that now there's a gravel lot across it, or two gravel lot, you know, some, so the, other parking is coming into play that will come into. Where before there never was, and so they tore the buildings down and created other parking there.
Where are we at, Kristen?
Yeah.
There's a little different competition there.
It doesn't, it doesn't exist today, because there's construction.
Yeah, I know, yeah. But it'll.
And I don't, I don't anticipate that any of those gravel lots will stay.
Well, that's right here.
Gravel lots.
Probably, probably not.
All right.
Okay, where, where are we at?
We're on five.
We're at five.
Okay, five. So twenty nineteen and before, we used to have a student discount that was in the parking garages in twenty nineteen, that was removed. So the only student parking discount we currently have is in the parking lots. The majority of those are used by Bispa students. I think I near, there currently is what, forty, whatever, and, and about eighteen, I think, are from USMH. So it, it was set back in twenty nineteen at twenty-five dollars, we were asking it to be bumped up to thirty-five dollars a month. And it would still only be in the parking lot.
Go ahead, Kristen.
So, based on your communication, there are members of the body that can't participate in this portion of this specific discussion, right?
Mm-hmm.
Which is who?
It's my friend.
Me.
So only us two can?
Three.
Three.
Oh.
I don't have a.
You're, okay, you're, you're okay.
I am okay.
I I didn't read the total of the email.
You should put it in.
I should put it on that, the AI thing. So.
That, do you have a question? Or was that your?
No, I was gonna make a a suggestion. One, I like staff's recommendation of going to quarterly. And then I was trying to figure out what the appropriate quarterly amount would be.
Okay, so the so people understand that they don't have this memo that's watching. The issue we have with some students is that as they approach the time when they're gonna graduate from Bispa, they stop paying. And so by the time we get to the point that we can say, hey, we need to cut you off, they leave and we're stuck with the bill.
So.
So if we sell it in like a a a three month block, you know, back in March, you pay now and you're good through the end of the year. You you know, that's how we could ensure that they pay. And that was the idea right now.
But is there also a way that you can do like a credit card authorization, like you almost like a an ACH or something like that where you're like, okay, this is what you pay and, you know, you sign this contract type of thing? Or are you not allowed to do that?
Yeah, we can't do that yet.
I don't think we can.
So you don't think you can, but we might be able to.
Maybe later, not right now.
I'm not I'm not sure I understand your question.
So whenever there's like a, you know, a contractual agreement, you know, and it's like billed monthly, I know that I'm going to be billed monthly, whether or not, and I signed something that authorizes my credit card to be charged.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, we don't do that. Yeah, we can't do that.
So right now, right now, we can do that in Envoice Cloud. Are we online customer service payments? However, this very specific thing that we are doing is not Angela, correct? They're not set up through the Envoice Cloud portal for those types of things.
What is it? Utility billing and that such is?
And taxes.
Taxes, but not parking.
We have to, we could, we could research it, right? To create your store. The other thing that we can, in Envoice Cloud, the other thing that we can do is, we'll look to see if there's some way, I don't think there's one, but we could park them in South Park.
Well, part of it is your side.
Skipping out on the month or three months?
What's that?
Are they skipping out on the month or the three months?
It can be.
I try not to let them go three months, but yes, once in a while.
What I'm saying is if I'm paying you monthly.
Yep.
Am I stopped paying in June and you're saying that you expected I was gonna pay in July and August as well?
No, they're they're graduating, let's say, in May.
Okay.
And so in March, we're like, hey, you notice you didn't pay your bill? Oh, yeah, I'm gonna pay it. And then April rolls around. And unlike a garage where you can turn off their permit, they have a hang tag. So the only thing we really do is start ticketing them.
I got you.
And so it's not, yeah, so it puts a lot of enforcement to figure it out. And so what happens is they'll pay maybe March, maybe not April, and then by May.
I mean, the simplest thing is just go to a quarterly rate.
Which we can do.
And then just make them pay for three months?
But but here's the thing with the quarterly rate.
That's tough for a college student. Three months of.
You say college student?
College student.
Or some are. Some are high school students, but I doubt the high school students actually paying.
You had a number there of X were Bispa and X were.
Yeah, um. Oh, what was that? I know you said like. Yeah, I think I think the number you gave was like forty. I think it's, uh, where was it?
It says forty-five percent.
I think we had I think we had like forty, right, we currently had like forty-one from Bispa and nine from USMH and nine from Frostburg.
So it's Bispa. It's not the college.
So the other thing with the with the.
So it's seniors. Senior senior students.
Yeah, but they're not they're not paying it themselves.
They're not paying it themselves, yeah.
I I'm fine with that. I'm whatever.
I think if we have both, I mean, I think by by code, it would be you guys set the rates or we have to bring a resolution to you to set the rates. But I think how we sell it in blocks or not, unless you wanna set something, but it may not be exactly quarterly because maybe they leave school early. If it's a college student, maybe they're only here for one semester. So we still need the option to do it monthly. I'm only doing it quarterly to try and get my money before they skip town.
What is the monthly lot rate if I didn't fall in that category?
Fifty-six dollars.
Fifty-six, okay.
Yep.
And we're proposing it stay at fifty-six or go up?
I didn't propose that in here anywhere.
You did not propose it to go up?
No, I didn't propose any changes, but we can certainly do that.
Okay.
But even thirty-five is still a pretty good discount.
Um. I don't like raising student rates. What about?
I just don't like raising student rates.
I I was gonna suggest.
I don't like raising student rates.
I was gonna suggest twenty-eight, which is half.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Twenty-eight, okay.
What'd you say?
Twenty-eight.
It's half of fifty-six. I was just trying to find a compromise.
It's fine, it's fine. Definitely not thirty-five. I'm not.
No, I'm not thirty-five.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I'm good at twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Are we done?
No. Sorry.
Other parking changes, the mayor and council may.
There's two other things in here, um, which I think we might have already, um, parking is currently free after five PM weekdays a week and weekend hours on the street and parking lots. I threw this in here just to talk about briefly. I'm not really in favor of changing that of having, because it causes more enforcement. So you have to hire enforcement. So if you don't, if you go outside those hours, you kinda have to, you know, you have to have enforcement or it doesn't work. So I just threw it in there for something to talk about. The other item had to do with the curb side parking, which was enacted during COVID. And so we have a number of spots around town. Um, I think there's, I have in here, uh, twenty parking spaces for curb side parking. Those were placed during COVID because you couldn't go into business, businesses and restaurants and that sort of thing. And so and I knew that's gonna be real pushback on that, so.
Here's.
Well, here it is.
Here's my two issues. On the first one.
Yep.
I think it's too early. I don't think we're going to really know that until.
Fair enough.
Eight months from now.
Yep.
When things, activities have occurred and things have opened up.
Yep.
So I just think that that's, uh, I think that will be ripe for discussion next year.
Okay.
And trying to like gear up for staff for that, I think would be difficult.
Yeah, we're struggling with staff as it is and everybody is.
On item two.
Yep.
Item B.
Yeah, item B, under six.
Six B, yeah.
Yeah, under six B, the other thing that we didn't have before COVID was the, I don't wanna say dependence, that's the wrong word. My life will probably kill me. Uh, proliferation of the use of DoorDash and services like that.
Yeah.
Way more, way more active today than it was four years ago. And so I would have difficulty saying cut those out without understanding how integral they work to the restaurant businesses downtown of the way DoorDash works.
A dasher pulling up and grabbing in and grabbing.
That's different.
But typically.
Oh, it's different than curb side.
But typically, like, say it's FedEx before that, so you have FedEx and UPS and whatever.
You're right.
Our staff would not ticket them. We know they're there for ten seconds.
You don't know the DoorDashers. You don't know DoorDashers.
Yeah, but they're still moving on because they have to. That's how they make money. They can't, they can't be there on.
No, we don't know.
Well, true, we don't know who they are. Okay.
I wanna know, I would want, I would want to understand where those sixteen spaces are before I would look at you and say we should get rid of those.
Yeah, I understand.
And I think that's a conversation you have to have with the business because we may have the sixteen spaces in the wrong places now. You know what I mean?
Two of them are right on the right across the square.
Well, in all of the, at the Main Street meeting this morning, it would have been like perfect opportunity to talk to the Main Street business owners.
Yeah, I think item B is a good conversation to have and come back and say, hey.
Several at the library still because you're gonna be in the library.
Right.
That's where I park.
And there's supposed to be a limit on that, but that's hard to enforce unless you're standing there, unless you come back every thirty minutes.
Has anybody asked the library if they feel like they still need them?
No. I am.
I mean, I do.
I just think that that's an exercise to sit down and go, okay, in these blocks and these places.
It's been three or four years. I simply wanted to bring your attention that that may be something we have a conversation for, so.
All right, where we at?
We can certainly look like.
That's, that's it? Are we good?
Yeah, we got you.
All right, we got through that.
We got it.
Cool.
Thank you.
High five.
Bring us back next week.
What?
I mean, why don't you sit in the meeting as long as, you don't have any other choice but to joke. Oh, water, wastewater rate model update, um.
Where's Kristen?
He wants to use the wastewater.
I have rehearsal.
This is insane.
Is she hitting us to me?
Text, I don't know, I'm gonna be late. I can feel it in my bones. I'm not Ian. I'm not Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A whole nother, uh, a whole nother way of looking at it.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy and Tyler. So, um, I I think what I'm, I'm gonna change my approach. Um, and, uh, so the very first slide, I worked through this, the the three scenarios, um, brought everything down to a cost per thousand gallons to help to put it into perspective for you. And, uh, what I wanna point out is the green block at the top is our current rate model. It is how our current rate model is structured. The blue block in the middle is, um, the, uh, average, go into one tier using kind of the average of the two rates. And the third one is, um, looking at the higher of the two rates for non-residential customers. What I wanted to point out in this, in this, um, with this pay, with this slide, and and I apologize, I could not make this slide um, attractive, no matter what I did, is that that block in the middle, it says FY twenty-five. What we brought before you, um, the first time was a fourteen percent water rate increase for three consecutive years and a thirteen percent wastewater rate increase for three consecutive years. Um, and the public hearing that will occur next week is using that assumption. We had to get that advertisement out. So this is where I'm going to change my my approach is that I would ask, um, the the mayor and council to at least right now, stay with the two tier design so we do not have a ninety day delay in implementing our rates come effective July first. And if you want to come back, we can come back at, you know, in FY twenty-five and look at, um, adjusting those rates, um, to the one tier average. Or if you wanna talk about the two tier using the higher amount, we can do that. I will caution you, especially on the box that is pink, um, that, um, the FY twenty-five rate increase that will occur is twenty-one percent for inside, thirty percent for outside, and twenty-six percent for water comp, for the wholesales, um, using that higher rate. Um, and then, of course, you calculate the fourteen percent, what that would be in FY twenty-six and FY twenty-seven. It is possible. I can't predict what, um, the wholesale customers would do or even what Washington County would do if they experienced a twenty-one, a thirty percent or twenty-six percent rate increase in FY twenty-five as opposed to the fourteen. You can see the one tier average is fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen. Um, those numbers can be adjusted slightly. I developed the spreadsheet. I can adjust them slightly to keep them closer to, you know, get them active, closer to the fourteen per, excuse me, fourteen percent. Though I'd ask that maybe we come back, um, you know, you know, in the first quarter or even the second quarter to look at, um, you know, how we get there. Because if we, if we don't move forward, we're gonna have at least a ninety day, um, delay in implementing, um, the water rates. You could move forward with the wastewater rate increase only. So, um, you know, put, I'll put that, put that out there. And then I will bop through the rest of the slides. Um, and you can think about it and and let me know as we go through them.
Do you happen to have a copy of the previous? Cause I didn't bring my packet.
I did not bring that with me.
Cause these numbers don't look familiar.
These numbers, um, they are cost per thousand gallons, bringing them down. So what I did is I said, okay, what's the cost per thousand gallon? So if you wanna know what ten thousand gallons of water would cost, you know, for inside is one point seven eight times ten or twenty for twenty thousand or whatever, it allows you, it allows for easy calculation. Um, what this does is it combines the fixed fee and the usage fee, um, so that I could calculate what that rate increase would be. Um, but, you know, from a, from a staff perspective, um, if we can't decide to move forward with something that doesn't require that we re-advertise, um, then we are going to have that ninety day, up to ninety, well, it'd be a ninety day because we are on quarterly bill cycles. Um, one of the things that that I did to try to help put this in perspective is just looking at all of, looking at the rates, um, using, um, hundred and fifty gallons of water a day. And when I did my comparisons, I did very, very local comparisons. Hagerstown, um, looking at twenty-four and twenty-five, Funkstown, um, Smithsburg, Williamsport, and Washington County looking at FY twenty-four, and then Washington County has FY twenty-five rates. So for our inside water, you can see where we're at. Um, and then if you flip the page on the outside water, you can also see where we are at compared to the jurisdictions that, um, that are literally our neighbors and or that we sell water to. So the second slide is the outside. The third slide is our wholesale customers. So you can see that, um, uh, for a wholesale customer, where we're at per thousand gallon, so it's a cost per thousand gallon, we're selling it, we're selling it at three dollars and ninety-one cents. Funkstown, um, their rate for, um, their rate is eight seventy-nine per thousand, Smithsburg eight ninety-six, and Williamsport eleven seventy per thousand. And this is looking at their inside customers. Um, uh, the jurisdictions do have inside and outside customer rates. Um, on this next slide, I have to, in creating these and so many tables, Washington County, um, that's actually a combined, their wastewater is one ninety-three, um, and their, uh, for twenty-four and their, um, for twenty-five, it's two oh five. So for wastewater inside, it's, you know, you can see where we are, but it's it's pretty flat. It's, they're more consistent with, um, Williamsport. I apologize for grabbing the combined there. Um, the wastewater outside, whoops, I need to move, um, bill comparison. Um, you can see with the exception of Williamsport, it pretty much levels out for everybody, which is kind of what you would expect on the outside, um, on the wastewater. Finally, I did combined bills for you so you can see what those combined bills and the cost per thousand gallons are for, um, water and wastewater. These are inside, using Funkstown, Smithsburg, and Williamsport's inside rates. Washington County only has one rate. You don't have an inside and outside county rate. They have one rate. Um, and then the next page looks at the outside combined rates and you can see where where we are. Um, the flattening of that curve is a result of the wastewater rates being closer to what our neighboring jurisdictions are, even though the water rates are lower. This last slide answers a question that, um, was, um, asked last time, hopefully puts it into perspective. Um, and so if you're an inside customer, water and sewer customer, your combined bill is going to go to about a hundred and fifty-eight, hundred and fifty-nine dollars. It's gonna be a quarterly increase of eighteen fifty-eight and an annual increase of seventy-four thirty. For outside combined, the bill's gonna go to about three hundred dollars, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents. Annually, that'll cost you about a hundred and forty dollars. Quarterly, um, about thirty-five dollars. And in our joint service area, um, the, uh, combined bill will go to approximately two hundred and seventy-two dollars. Um, annual increase of one twenty-eight, quarterly increase of thirty-two. So tried to put all of that data together for you so that you could kinda see what the impact of those rates were um, on, um, our custom, across our customers. Um, and then, um, I also, you know, did the tier. Um, I can hand out, um.
While you're looking for that, can you tell me when was the first meeting? Do you remember the date of the first meeting where you first presented the, I guess, the model, the the rate, the proposed rates?
It was in, I know it was in early April. I don't, um, I I don't remember the exact date.
April sixteen.
So what Ashley is passing around.
Council member, those is from last work session.
Yeah, this is it. So I may be totally misremembering, so if I am, I apologize. But I thought that you had approval for everything except from the original proposal with New Gen Strategies and Solutions LLC, deleting level two over one hundred thousand dollars of non-residential in both the inside water and outside water fees.
That is correct. And this very first page that we talked about looks.
So that would give a non-residential, meaning a company that's using the water to make things or whatever that they're going to turn around and sell, just like any other.
Yes, but it it includes commercial, industrial, public authority, residential commercial, and residential multi. The only customer classes that it doesn't include is individual residential and wholesale.
So all of those that you mentioned are entities that effectively have all kinds of costs that go into their operation. And they use that to then, what comes out the other end is is their rate to charge for whatever it is, whether they're making popsicles or renting apartment space or whatever.
Correct.
So the level one for inside was one eighty-seven, two thirteen, two forty-three, two seventy-seven, two eighty-five, two ninety-four.
Right.
And then outside was four fifty-three, five sixteen, five eighty-nine and so forth.
Yes.
I I'm, I'm, I must be totally confused because I'm pretty sure that I remember two times that the body, now a third time, said just delete level two and use only the level one number, not a combined number, not a merge number, not a whatever.
Is exactly what I did on that first page. I gave you all three. The green is the original. The blue is using an average and the pink is using the most expensive number. The numbers I had, in order to get to that point, I had to calculate the bills. I had to do the calculations, combining the fixed fee with the usage fee. So what you're seeing in a cost per thousand gallon is not going to be. But what I caution you on in going with that is that the ins, the inside city customers will see a twenty-one percent increase.
Non-residential.
Non-residential.
Commercial cost of businesses.
There's residential multi and then there's residential.
Those are businesses that own those.
Okay, I understand that. The, um, the, um.
Cause to my knowledge, not, there isn't a building that is multiple family, meaning apartment building, that has individual meters for every unit. Right? There's one meter for an apartment.
Correct, correct.
So that business is paying for that commodity, water, the same way they're paying for landscaping and new roof and whatever else. It's a, it's a part of their operational cost.
What, yeah, and, yes, so inside customers, non-residential customers, would see a 21% rate increase in FY '25. Non-residential outside customers would see an overall 30% rate increase. And the wholesale customers would see a 26% rate increase. That's looking at actual usage data from '23, looking at, at usage data, assuming zero, assuming zero growth in their usage to calculate these numbers. So they'll see, we'll see a 21, a 30, and a 26.
On this page, it says, "Non-residential, Level 1, fiscal year 2025, $2.13."
I know, I know.
I don't see $2.13 on here.
No, you don't see $2.13 because I have, in order to get a cost per thousand gallons to calculate the percentage, I have to, I have to calculate, I have to do a back calculation to get to there. This is a cost per thousand to allow me to get to that percentage. I will, and I'll say this again, of course, staff will move forward in whatever direction that is provided. But I would caution on moving forward with, with the number, with, with the rates, with the higher, the Tier 1 in the non-residential rate because you, it could be challenged before the Public Service Commission. It's a huge deviation from a rate model that has been in place since 2005, that was challenged back in 2005 and we prevailed. This is a huge deviation from it. And when we build a rate model, and our rate model's been in place for a long time, we look at what our required revenue is for the time period that we're setting the rates. And I actually looked at the required, looked at that revenue and what we'd be, we would be collecting. And essentially, if we went with the rates, if I went with that, that top tier and, and leaving the fixed fees where they were presented, over that three-year period, we would collect about $1.5 million above what the required revenue is to run the system. In the, looking at the rate, looking at it using the average, we would collect about $200,000 above what we would collect if we, if we followed the recommendation of New Gen and, which was originally presented.
Well, I'm just going to say, I, I, I don't think so. And I understand what you're saying. I understand your concern. But those that you are concerned about, in my opinion, can't have it both ways. They can't walk around saying that the city of Hagerstown's water system is old and decrepit, which isn't true, and is in, in disrepair, which isn't true, and doesn't have the capacity for, to serve what we need today, which isn't true. But they walk around saying those things. We want to, at least my, from my perspective, we want to not only continue to do the repairs that are necessary because like any other, any other system, any other piece of equipment, whatever, things need to be repaired, replaced, pipes need to be replaced, so we need the funds to do that. But we also have to look forward for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years to what is the capacity need going to be then, so that we can, as I've said before, adequately serve, you know, the expansion that we all hope, I think we all hope, beyond Hagerstown, you know, that all, all of, all of our area hopes continues to, the growth that continues to happen here. And I, I can't see where somebody is saying, well, they don't take in enough money because they're not, they don't, it's going bankrupt, blah, 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 all the stuff that they're saying is not true, and then turn around and saying, well, you're taking in too much money. So that's why I say, I don't think so. Maybe I'm wrong. I'm going to now defer to the expert at the council and see what he has to say.
I'm just getting this material, so I don't know that I fully understand it. And I feel like I've said that before.
Just like, you can't come to us this late.
So.
Yeah, this is hard.
It's too much.
But am I understanding that what I see on the front page is a combination of the rate adjustment and the quarterly fixed fee?
Yes. I cal, what I did is I, literally, I calculated bills. I took the usages across all customer classes and calculated the bills to come up with these numbers.
Okay. I want to pause there just for a second. So when I look at this sheet, which I'm just getting today, and I look at this sheet, which I got a couple of weeks ago,
Yes.
and I look at this sheet and it says, "A 5/8 inch connection has a quarterly fixed fee of $8.32," and that's going to go to $9.48. If I were a customer and I was getting a bill, and I had a 5/8 inch connection, I would pay $9.48 for the fixed fee. And then I would pay whatever my per thousand gallons cost is based on where I fall down on this sheet. So as a residential, I would be paying $1.87 per thousand gallons. And if I go to next year, I'm going to be paying 2.13 per thousand gallons, or a difference of about 26 cents, right? So I'm going to, mine will go up 26 cents per thousand gallons, and my fixed fee is going to go up about a dollar. Is that, is that, am I looking at that correctly?
So if on the.
Am I looking at that correctly? I just want to.
I'm going to assume yes. So what, if I, if I go back to this, this particular graph,
Uh huh.
where I did the cost per thousand gallons, and. So, and so did the cost per thousand gallons and said, okay, if I take the fixed fee and the usage fee at 13,500 gallons, 150 gallons of water a day, the cost per thousand gallons is $10.40. So if I were to multiply that by 13.5, then I would get the water bill.
So if I use 13,500 gallons, my bill is going to be $106.85 based on my extrapolation of this chart here. The $9.48 plus 13.5 times the 2, right?
It, yeah, it's going to be 13.5 times 10.40. I didn't, not, I didn't burn a calculator, so. And I, but theoretically, yes. So when I did the cost per thousand, I, I used 13,500 and I used, it's not in these charts, I also used 18,000. Looking at 1 EDU. And, and then the, what I passed around on this one was doing the calculations, looking at actual usages to show you what it was, would be in FY '24, what it'd be in FY '25 if we did the 2-tier. And then I used the 2 alter, the 2 alts, which also gives you the calculation to verify, to show you what those percentage increases would be.
Okay. I just want to ask this. If I use 13,500 gallons for the next quarter, my bill for water inside the city as a residential customer is going to be $9.48 plus 2.13 times 13.5?
For inside water, for 13,500, at the combined rate, it's 33.57.
The, the current rate or the new rate?
That's the current rate.
That's the current rate.
Right. The new one will be like 35 bucks instead of 20 bucks.
38, 24.
Right? Okay. I understand that.
Yeah, there's no change.
So, let me get to this next point. So you're basing the fixed fee on the meter size, correct? So if I had, if I had a business, the business uses, well, let's take a school. School probably uses about 200,000 gallons a quarter. Their meter size is probably anywhere from a 2 to a 6, depending on the type of school, right? So you're going to plug that in, you're going to say, okay, this school has an average, it's a 4-inch meter, and it's $208 right now, and then it's going to go to 2.37, or about 20 bucks more a quarter, or about $80 for the year for that particular school. And then the change will be in the per thousand gallons, where they're going to go from 1.67 to 1.90, right?
Yeah, if you look at this one, you'll see, you'll, you'll be able to kind of compare what a school will look at, the school will look at. Because there in the.
So.
On the second, on the second set of calculations, where you're looking at 2,000 gallons a day, 180,000 for the period. And so you, you can see what it would be in FY '24 right now, what it would be in FY '25 if we use the current. And then if we used Alternative 1, and then if we used Alternative 2.
So if I had an apartment building that had 30 apartments in it, you're going to estimate that that's going to have a meter size somewhere in that 2 to 4 range, right?
Yeah, typically a 4 or 6 inch, yeah. And if you look at the, at the very last one, I'm using a 6-inch meter, I'm using 100,000 gallons a day. I used those two specifically, looking at inside and out. That's consistent with Meritis and, as an outside customer, and they're using a little more than that. And then Conagra's using a little less than that, to put that into perspective. So I looked at 100,000 gallons a day, and inside and outside, looking at all three scenarios. And then I also looked at the wholesale scenario, using 230,000 gallons a day. More or less consistent with Smithsburg. So you can see the impact of calculating each of those rates with those usages. Knowing that the cost per thousand sometimes can be, that's, for me, it's easier because I can take the total number of gallons and just multiply it out. So, but I used actual usages on this sheet to get to there, and then calculated the percentage increase over the FY, the current rates. And I, I agree with Councilman Perrini that as far as wastewater, we, we're fine. We're on, we're all on the same page. As far as residential water, we're all on the same page. Where, where we need to come to a decision is on non-residential water.
So in this sheet that you provided us, the rate going from $1.67 to $1.90 for the Level 2, or the folks that use above 100,000 gallons, what you're saying is because we want to get rid of that, those folks are, actually would go from $1.67 to 2.13, right?
I don't have.
I don't have what you have.
I don't have what you have in front of me.
On this sheet here.
Yes.
Projected water inside city fees.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
In the city, I would actually be going from $1.67, and instead of $1.67 to $1.90, you're going from $1.67 to 2.13. Because you were getting a discounted rate.
Yeah.
For using more.
Correct.
But we don't really have anybody using under 100,000 gallons.
In non-residential? Most of our customers, we have a lot of customers in non-residential.
I think I was thinking wholesale. We don't have any wholesale that, that go below that figure.
No. And because of the number, the residential multi, remember.
This gets back to the point, why are we selling the water for less on average to the larger user than what we're charging to the average user that uses less?
I think that's been the question all the time. We keep asking that question.
Yeah, and I, from, from my perspective, it's, the answer is this. This rate model was built with certain assumptions in it. And, and those assumptions that were in the rate model for the non-residential were for, well, for residential, it was, the second tier was a conservation tier. For non-residential, it was looking at more of a business-friendly type approach. And I don't have, I, I don't have any issue moving forward in a different direction. All I'm, you know, what I'm trying to convey this evening is, is that if.
The timing.
The timing, yes, more than anything. If we don't move forward with the 14%.
Was the advertisement placed?
Yes.
And how often does that have to happen?
Once, at least 15 days before the hearing. That was in favor.
And the hearing is next week?
Right.
So that's been, that's been done, the hearing's been set. Okay. Let me ask another question. If, this is hypothetical, if the only thing that was being changed from last year to this year in the rate was, I'm going to pick one inside city residential customer is under 18,000 gallons. That's the only rate that we could have changed. Does that advertisement, is that still list all of the rates and everything? Or is that advertisement just say, here's the one that's changing?
It should list all of them.
It should list all of them, because.
Because you're setting the rates for the next year for all classes of customers.
And when you set the rates, do we show in the advertisement the percent change like is being calculated here?
It was the general percentage, yes.
And so if all of the, all of them are listed and only that one is changing, all the other percent changes would be zero?
Yes.
In that hypothetical situation?
Yeah, they would, but because, as, as Councilmember Alshire said, we're updating, it's still implementing 100, all of our rates for that time period. So it would be whatever it was for that one rate, zero for the other. And then the ordinance that updates it literally would, would update all of the rates that are in there. Even though it would be a zero change for all of them, but that one, it would still have all of them in the ordinance.
Okay. So let me ask Councilman Member Alshire a question. The advertisement that was done was based on these, the, the proposed rates that came from the study that we've seen now four ti, three times, in different formats. But the 2-tier, inside, outside, residential, non-residential, Level 1, Level 2, all of that, okay? If we, if we continue with that, that's already been advertised, that will go into effect on July 1st, right?
All bills rendered, yeah.
And the next, the next water bill.
October 1.
Will be October 1st.
That should be your first billing for the July through September billing period.
And it's how we adopt, how we.
So the bill is post, it's after the fact.
After you've used it.
Yeah. So you get your meter reading for the quarter, times the rate. The rate will go into effect July 1st. The bill will come out approximately October 1st for that first quarter of the first, of the beginning of fiscal year. Okay. If we go forward with the proposed.
There's, no, there's different, there's different routes. Not everybody, not everybody gets billed at the same time.
So how we have always implemented them is it's for all bills rendered. So on July 1st, even though you've used that water, the, the three previous months, the previous 90 days, you still get the new rate. It's not delayed 90 days.
Okay.
So it goes into effect immediately.
The rate goes into effect for every, hang, hang on.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I, I just trying to, so, so the rates go all in, just the sidebar that you brought up. The rates all go into effect July 1st, but not everybody gets billed at the same time. So some bills have.
Over a quarter period, right?
Some bills have pardon, some, okay. Here's my question, Councilman Alshire. If we go forward with the rates as advertised with the public hearing next week, they will go into effect July 1st. If we then do a subsequent, or, yeah, subsequent. If we then do a subs- subsequent, or, yeah, subsequent, um, rate change for, um... So that would be, that would've gone into effect July 1st, so if we do a subsequent rate change for October 1st of just the one line, non-residential, for inside and outside city, um, and effectively delete the lower rates for the non-residential, um, that would then go into effect October 1st for any bills after that, right? Do you understand what I'm saying, Kristen?
Mm-hmm.
What's the question?
The question is, is that acceptable?
Well, go ahead. Michelle's get right.
I don't know that we have, like, I don't know that we have many options to say that's not acceptable.
Okay.
The, the difficulty that I have is we're presenting this picture to the public, and I feel like I have a broken record when I say this. And it doesn't matter how many times or how many ways you present this, but I'm gonna use this one simple scenario. I'm a residential customer in the city, right? Residential customer. And I'm gonna use 50,000 gallons of water next quarter. And I'm gonna pay the 948, I'm sorry, I'm gonna pay the 832, right? As my base rate, my, my fixed fee, sorry. And then I'm gonna pay $33, $34 for the first 18,000 gallons, okay? But then if I use that additional 32,000 gallons, I'm gonna pay 360 a thousand gallons. So my total bill is gonna be $160 roughly, right? I'm a resident, I'm gonna use 50,000 gallons, that's what I'm gonna pay. Now, when these new rates go into effect, and I use that same 50,000 gallons, that extra 32,000 gallons, to me, the residential customer in the city, is gonna go up 50 cents, right? 50 cents a thousand gallons, 50 cents. That same commercial customer, their rate's only gonna go up 13 cents per thousand gallons.
Yeah, one of the things that you have to take into consideration also is that a residential customer pays a benefit fee, pays cap, allocation one time, one EDU into the system. Non-residential customers, it's evaluated annually, anytime they use, um, anytime they hit 100 gallons per day or more over their allocation, they pay for that additional capacity.
It should be, because commercial entities change their types of usage all the time. They go from 100 employees to 500 employees.
Right, but they do pay that additional capacity, when, and when a residential customer goes over the 200 gallons per day, that difference in the rate is, um, actually offsets our, it goes towards the capital improvements. It's the luxury fee, because we're not collecting additional allocation.
But I'm not gonna turn my house into housing 25 people, which then begs this question, and gets to the point of residential, because it sounds to me like we're classifying residential properties, let's say a 30 apartment building, right, a 30 unit apartment building, right? If I live in that apartment building, and I decide to use 50,000 gallons, I get it at 13 cents extra per thousand gallons next year. But if I live in that house, which is classified as residential, I'm paying 50 cents extra per thousand gallons. For the same exact thing.
And, um, not to muddy the waters, but, um, one of the things, one of the things that we talked about months ago, what, when we, or almost, I guess, a year ago, when we did the last code amendment for, um, benefit fees, um, and, uh, the elected body said, let's not, let's not deal with it, we're not gonna do that right now, let's, we'll do that later. Residential multi doesn't, does not encode, does not get reevaluated and build additional allocation, which is something that needs to be corrected, that, um, the desire was to kind of put that on hold and come back. But, you know, for, for, for water and wastewater, um, like I said, we can move forward in whatever direction, in whatever manner you want to move forward.
I just don't like talking about this stuff in percentages, because out there in business land and residential land, they hear percentage and go, oh, the city's adjusting the residential rate 14 percent. And then, in the second breath, you say, well, if we do this, so the businesses, we're adjusting them 22 percent. However, next year, if we did that, and we went with those numbers that sound unfair because we presented them in a percentage format, the reality is, me as a residential customer, next year, we'd be paying $4.07 per thousand gallons, when I get above that 18, and the commercial customer will be paying $2.13 or half the price.
Then, wait, why is that?
Because back in the day...
When the rate model...
When Al Martin ran things, it was very clear, and, and all due respect to him and everyone else at that time, it was, we got plenty to sell, the more we can sell to singular customers, the cheaper we can sell it, uh, the more we can make. And what I'm saying is, and I've said forever, that rate model just doesn't seem right.
Then doesn't that, then beg the question as to whether the model is relevant to usage today? And if it's not, before any of this gets approved, the mod, the strategy has to be reevaluated so that you're not using the same model that you used in 2005.
I've been saying that forever.
Well, I, I would go so far as to say, it's not only the usage today, but the anticipated growth tomorrow.
It, I shouldn't, I shouldn't get to own a residential property that, that provides, let's say it's a master meter for a, a, a stick of townhouses, right? Which isn't markedly different than the average house size, but if I own that master meter, up to that first 100,000 gallons on that master meter, I'm getting charged $2 per thousand gallons, right? And the eight houses that happen to be individual, right across the street, they're getting charged $4 per thousand gallons. I mean, that's a, like, that's exactly how this reads.
So let me...
And is applied.
Let me spin her head off her shoulders. You know where I'm going with this.
Actually, what I was gonna say is, I, I would come back to Councilmember Perrini's original suggestion. We are limited for time. If we are wanting to continue to move forward with some of these water infrastructure projects we already, we already have lined up, my recommendation right now, and, and believe me, I completely understand, because I'm sitting back here, I'm going...
What?
I'm out, right? But then I think we do what was recommended by the consultant, get it in place for July 1st, but make the strategy right now, that we are coming back and working the entire model from there.
Well, actually, I'm gonna propose an interim step. I have no problem coming back and reviewing this, the philosophy of the model, and, and all of that, which will take till next July 1st, right? That's fine. What I'm, what I would propose, and I don't know how you want me to do this, but here's what I would propose. Two parts, number one, part one, for the council to, uh, basically accept the rates as were published, go through the public hearing, and implement on July 1st, provided, part two, that immediately, we start moving forward on a subs- subsequent rate change, immediately after, somewhere in that first quarter of the next fiscal year, or between July and so forth, to, um, change the inside and outside non-residential usage to eliminate level two, and advertise it, and hold a hearing, and do all of that for that one rate change.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're gonna have to do...
Hang on, one second. I, I, I just wanna see if there's any interest in that. If there is, then we can discuss it and go forward, please, Mayor.
Never.
So what I would, what I would suggest...
This one.
The green. It's the green, it's the top one.
I would say that it's gonna be, if, if we do sort in July, with what has been recommended and published, right? That to say that we will immediately commit to by October, changing just one number. While everything else stays on that model, it's gonna have significant and substantial financial impact.
What?
And if we're gonna look at it...
Why?
Other than taking in more revenue, what, what does that mean?
Well, let me, I, when I, what was just passed around is what, what the, so the, the sewer rates, the green block at the top are the wastewater or the sewer rates. And if you look, there's no residential, commercial, there is, everybody pays the same freight on wastewater. Everybody pays the same freight. Yeah, if you could pass those around, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at these like, why do I have one?
Yeah, okay. Um, so, if you're going to, the, the water was done significantly different. So if you're going to look at it, um, they're all the same, there's just one page.
Okay, sorry. They're going around in both directions apparently.
Well, yeah, trying to get around quicker.
Right now.
So if you look at the block at the top, this is what, the FY '24 rates are there, and FY '25 rates are there for sewer. It's one size fits all, okay? Likely, that is what our consultant is going to come back and recommend, is a one size fits all, one rate, everybody pays the same freight, um, and there would still be, because it would require an amendment, a mutually agreed, agreed upon amendment to the wholesale agreements to remove the 16 percent. So the only other rate that there would be, would be a 16 percent discount on wholesale. Likely, this is what the consultant would recommend, is a one size fits all. Inside, outside, one rate for everybody. And it's, that's what we do on wastewater, um, and I think that would probably solve, everybody pays their, you know... They're, you know, just a very simple approach.
Hey, I feel about that, Kristen's calculating. Michelle, are you, are you just calculating to...
I'm just calculating.
You processing?
While he's calculating, I'll just say in general, what you basically just said was, what I just heard was, that the consultant will come back with a whole new model that will wind up with a, everybody pays the same rate, inside, outside, whereas I don't think it's appropriate just to say, that's the direction, that's gonna be what the next model looks like, maybe, maybe not.
I don't know that for sure, I suspect that it could.
I don't know how that helps us today. I think the focus today is, do we go with the rates that were advertised, and then can we change, make the, the...
Without one.
The one line change before October 1st, before the next billing cycle.
What's, what? I, I think that's difficult, I think logistically that's difficult.
I was thinking just as bad as... Michelle stepped up and recommended, had a recommendation, um...
I think we're gonna evaluate changes, we're gonna adopt these, and then we're just gonna evaluate changes, and make the changes, you know, as a package, and we're gonna say by January 1.
Here's the new rates.
Like, I just think that that's more logistically practical with the effort that it would entail, you know what I mean, and, and the timeframe the government works.
I understand what you're saying, I understand the process you're saying, I don't understand why you're saying it would be difficult.
Cause I, I think that that, I think that that's...
Effectively would be making an advertisement with one...
One, I don't think that you can change just one without an evaluation, like, of the model. That I agree with.
But that's what we asked for the last time.
Well, what I'm saying is, if we're not going to do that as part of this budget process, then we need to look at the model, and if, even at the end of the day, if the model renders, or evaluation renders that that's the only change we make, which I don't believe that's the case, you, then that, then that's what you reach anyway, but I, I don't think you can look at it in that singular manners. Like, I, I just think you have to look at the model, but, you know, and I... And I think that, that, you know, I had questions of the wholesale rate too, so I just, you know, I, I think that, um, it requires that, and, and...
The 16 percent discount?
The unfortunate part is, you know, and, and it just is what it is, we're having this discussion two months before, you know, budget, uh, you know, needs to be adopted, and, you know, it's, it's a significant volume of information to receive at, at three meetings, uh, to accomplish that purpose.
But can we ask for a schedule of what has to happen between now to make an effective change in the model and the rates by January 1st?
I think that's a completely applicable question.
Okay, can we have a list of every step that has to go between, has to happen between now in order to revise the model, evaluate and revise the model, and put in place new rates for January 1st? That's six, seven, eight months from now.
The, uh, the, one thing that I'll need to move forward is, this cost will, will exceed $10,000 to completely, to revamp the model to, um, and so, well, well, as, on average, a model update is between 20 and 25,000 dollars. So, um, so I, you know, I just need the nod from the elected body to go ahead and get the proposal, start moving forward with it, and bring it to the, bring it for approval, to go ahead and start the work, and bring in the proposal, um, for, um, approval after, you know, after the work is begun, authorized, just to initiate the work.
Is there a, is there a guess for the $10,000?
Well, you're just guessing, that's like an average, you're just saying...
I think...
We've already increased, uh, the purchase, the original purchase order was roughly 23,000, we've already increased it by 10,000, which was the maximum we could for finance, and...
We'll have to get a, get a quote and break it back to us then.
Yeah, so that's the first step, is to get a quote, bring it back.
It has to be a consent agenda, some sort.
So that's part of the process.
And then that would be the first part of the process.
That would be in May.
So, so you can include that in the list that you can bring back to us.
Yes, and then, um, you know, the, the other part of it is really just the consultant, um, updating the model, uh, looking at, um...
Well, first, there has to be a consensus on what the update is going to be to the model.
Right. Councilmember Alshire's absolutely right, you, you have to look at it holistically.
You have to look at it holistically, because it's a domino.
And it, and, and that's important, because, um, the model, once the mayor and council adopt it, once they, once they implement it, if, if other entities aren't happy with it, um, whether it's, uh, one of the, um, any of the, whether it's Washington County or one of the towns, they can, um, appeal to the Public Service Commission, they can challenge it.
I hear that, I was around in 2005 when that occurred. Um, I believe we're on fairly stable ground when it applies to the PSC and their application of their rules to water and sewer systems, not electric systems or other utilities that regulate the water and sewer systems, but, you know, I'm sitting here looking at a model that, that's, that's showing the three municipalities that we sell water to, that are charging four to seven times what we charge, and have, um, fixed fee, monthly fixed fees that are 10 times what our monthly fixed fee is. And I'm wondering, in my mind, when I look at those figures, you know, we're selling it like 350,000 gallons, and they turn around and sell them at nine and 11,000, or nine and 11 dollars a thousand gallons.
Right.
Um, and, I mean, at least in one case, it's sort of just going from one line to the other line.
Yes, and every, I mean, there's a master meter going into every system, into the three systems.
But I mean, some don't have towers or anything, it's just going, is water going to water, right?
Right.
And just, it, so, I just scratched my head a little when I say, you know, you're, you're, right?
And, and, um...
And, and if you go into it, being worried about whether there's gonna be a PSC... And, and if you go into it, being worried about whether there's going to be a PSC challenge, I think that's not the right approach here.
No, I agree.
But I don't think that we're, I don't think that we're looking at a reassessment of the model based on cost, meaning what we're charging. We're looking at the model, at least in my mind, and saying, okay, seventy percent of your costs to operate your system are fixed costs.
Right.
But you're charging the user that's generating that additional thirty percent in necessary operations less
Right.
than the seventy percent fixed cost users that are using it on that average fixed cost manner.
Right.
And.
It's never made sense to me.
It's imbalanced.
And so, looking at it holistically and, and I, and I agree with what's being said. Why, where my concern is, is that if I look at the wholesale rate in FY twenty-four for two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty thousand gallons a day, it's twenty-three thousand eight hundred. If we implement the, the rates as, as recommended, it goes from twenty-three to twenty-seven. If we go to the average tier, it goes from twenty-three to almost twenty-eight. If we go to the higher of the two tier, it goes from twenty-three eight to thirty thousand. That's where my concern is. That's a huge deviation in, just to say, we're just going to look at this and we're going to, we're going to go in this direction and not look at it volumetric per customer class across the system. That's where I'm, I'm trying to be cautious because of, you know, doing those calculations with those actual usages, known usages. So I think we need to look at it holistically and to address the, what I'm going to call those discounts to non-resident, you know, those discounts to non-residential customers. How, you know, how do we get there? Ask the rate, the rate consultant. I'm sure, I'm sure there's lots of other folks doing it, but how do we get there?
So we'll get a quote.
We'll get a quote and.
And then assuming, then you get, then, but in the meantime, you're going to get the quote, but then where there's going to be a timeline that that quote's accepted and then you move, and then we move forward to get to January first.
Yeah, well, I'll get, hopefully we'll have the quote for the May agenda so that we can have on the May consent agenda and we'll begin work in June. And we'll let them know what the dead, what the deadlines are to have that work done in that timeframe and just hold them to it. I think what we're going to need to do is, once they've made the, a first pass at it and, you know, make, I'm going to say, if it, you know, might not be completely refined, but just bring it before, saying, okay, this is the direction we think we're going to go. Are you good with this? Yeah, with them here, are you good with this? Just, you know, trying to address that.
Right.
To level that playing field, if you will. Yep.
Does that work?
Does that work for y'all?
I think it's going to have to.
Okay. City transportation.
What's that?
We also make sure that we have all of the information.
Yeah, before.
Instead of.
Or they can look at it. Take it apart maybe.
Whatever that means for the future. It's just too many charts.
Good pictures. City transportation priorities for Maryland Department of Transportation. M dot, Jim, I was about to call you Jeff. Jim Bender, city engineer.
I'll just, I'll try to be brief. Every year, the Department of Transportation asks municipalities and counties to submit their transportation priorities so that they can include them in the consolidated transportation plan. The city's priorities really have not changed over the past, I'd say, four or five years. It's been the same bullet items. I eighty-one widening has always been a high one. Trying to maintain highway user revenue rates. You know, the memo lists enough, but they are, this is essentially the same list of priorities that we presented last year. I would probably recommend drafting a letter that has those bullet points and has our recommendations and sending that into the Department of Transportation. But certainly, if there are priorities that, that the council has that aren't included in here, we can incorporate those.
When do you have to send a letter? I see the county already has.
Typically, they'd like to see them in April. And I had planned to bring it on the sixteenth, but then when we rescheduled the, with the legal cities, that, that kind of missed the time.
You guys go with it? Good. Thank you. All right. Marsh run trail change order to complete design and Jim.
Right. So this project has been around since, it really began in two thousand and fourteen. It's the design of a multi-use trail that would connect, basically, city park over to what is now the Fieldhouse Construction Project. We had our consultant get to about eighty, eighty-five percent plans three or four years ago, and then we were held up because we were waiting for CSX comments on those plans. They, CSX refused to give us their comments. There's been a change in personnel at CSX. We now have received their comments. I reached back out to our consultant to say, okay, what would it take for you to pick this project back up and take it to its completion? And that is the change order amount that they sent to us, which is a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. It's a, it's a large increase. I didn't want to just put this on a consent form without giving the, the council an opportunity to ask any questions or, or talk about this. And we do have, we do have funding available. Earlier this year, Columbia Gas had us pave some streets for them where they had installed gas mains and they reimbursed us. And that is basically found money because those were streets that we were going to pave anyway as part of our pavement preservation program. So we've got, we received a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars from them. We're also saving money because asphalt prices have gone down. So even on our regular streets that we would normally pave, I think we're going to end up seeing savings of sixty, seventy thousand dollars just on work that we would have done anyway. So I think we do have a funding source available. It's just a question of whether or not the council would like to move forward with this.
I think it's, I think we should, and kind of based on the, on the, what, second to last paragraph, you say that if it does end, it's not going to be, possibly not revived and we're still going to have to reimburse S H A.
That's, that's right. We've been, we've been operating on a two hundred thousand dollar grant.
It just seems like we should, I feel as if we should.
What was the original purchase order?
It was, it was approximately two hundred and forty thousand.
And, and eighty-five percent of that was spent?
They got to, they got to eighty-five percent plans. They spent more than the eighty-five percent of the P O.
So they effectively want to, not quite double it, but because of the three-year hiatus?
It's, it's that, and when we finally did receive the CSX comments, there were some, there are some things in there that it's going to take them some time to resolve that we had not, you know, had not contemplated before, so.
I just don't suppose the CSX is kicking anything in for that.
Not for, not for this trail project, no.
What was the concern, S H A?
S H A had a concern that it was a separate comment. They had some drainage concerns because we're building this trail and putting a tunnel under the railroad and they had concerns about the trail or the tunnel flooding. So that still needs to be resolved or addressed as part of this. And I think it can be. It's just that, that was kind of the point where everything stopped, you know, before our consultant was able to resolve that.
That's a really dumb question. S H A involvement is because.
They, this is Transportation Alternatives Planning Grant. So it flows through the state and the state has review obligations under it.
There's probably like a concept plan of this whole project.
There is.
I have, I was wondering if you could maybe share that again? I haven't seen it, but maybe remind, remind everybody.
Absolutely.
Sounds like kind of overbarrel.
I, I think in some ways, yes, I think so.
You guys good?
Yes.
All right. Change order to curb and sidewalk replacement contract, relocation of cultural trail. Jim Bender's still here with us.
So this is, this is basically just a change order to increase the P O, the purchase order for our curb and sidewalk contract. And the reason we're increasing it is this, this change order will cover the work to relocate the cultural trail that's related to Meredith Park. They, the state is, Maryland Stadium Authority is going to reimburse us for the cost to do that work. It's just that, you know, it's an accounting thing going through Michelle that we need to do this step so that she can increase the P O.
All of it? They're going to reimburse all of it?
They're going to reimburse for everything that is outside of their limited disturbance.
Y'all good?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you. Stan Minister.
Nothing.
All right. Councilwoman McIntyre. Oh, Scott, Scott.
I can wait.
Councilwoman McIntyre.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carini.
Nothing.
Councilwoman Renat.
Just a reminder that early loading starts May second, which will be at the Virginia Avenue location, not the downtown library. So go to Virginia Avenue this week for early loading. Thank you.
Councilmember Alchar.
I, I just want to say that tomorrow and Thursday, tomorrow's Wednesday, yeah, tomorrow and Thursday at, at nine a.m. and then again in the afternoon, fourth graders will be coming downtown to the Maryland Theater for the MSO Linked Up Concert. I'm headed to rehearsal right now, three hours with them. And so, just be mindful that there will be buses dropping off tons of fourth graders for the next two years, and I'm very, very thankful that I get to still do this. My fourth year doing it and this year, my grandson gets to come as a fourth grader. And with that, we are adjourned.
Make sure you look at Charlotte's shoe.